I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wouldn't mind us stay standing, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Kathy Gersner with sympathy and condolences to her family. Kathy was a wonderful woman. She did our videotaping. She was a head of records management for the town and her husband is the town councilman, Timmy Gersner.
Trustee Chaney?
Here.
Trustee McNabb?
Here.
Trustee Bachman?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes of May 2nd, 2022?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And may I have a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $50,399.04.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under correspondence this evening, we have a couple of letters. We have a letter from Warwick Grove homeowners' association requesting to store three new snow removal vehicles on the Blacktop area behind the Garden of Heroes, which is in Memorial Park. This has come before us, before the former board. What I would like is to have either a trustee and myself, probably the Parks liaison, and to reach out to the HOA and have that conversation with them, let them show us what they're thinking about, and then report that back to the board for this determination. So.
I have a question on that.
Sure, of course.
Is this something that is imminent, or is it something that we could wait until after the master plan process is complete to discuss?
Boy, I think we should have that conversation immediately.
Yeah, they may be working on their contract for next year's snow removal, so I think they would want to be able to say what's available to them relative to staging equipment.
Right. So, I mean, this is a temporary thing, so it doesn't particularly, I mean, if there's, if they're given the ability to do that, I don't think it would affect the master plan process. But I think we really owe, they stopped the process, the conversation, because they recognized there was a new board coming in, and so I would like to move forward with it.
I was under the impression that the request was an every-year sort of thing, or is it just one year while they change?
No, it would be for every year.
Okay. And is this a different location than they've asked for previously?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Yeah, what's the urgency?
Well, as.
Snow removal.
Well, it's snow removal, but the contract for that snow removal is probably being worked out now or soon.
So they're probably going out for bid, and they need to be able to describe what's available for the contractor relative to staging equipment over there. This is for the smaller stuff that is a little too big to bring in for each snow event?
Is the idea this helps them shop for a better price if, you know, a contractor decides to bid for it and they'd be willing, if they were able to store equipment there, to give them a better price? Is that what's the thought process?
Well, it would change the dynamics of how they operate, so if they're making it easier, you would think that the contractor would bid accordingly.
So the plan is you're going to discuss with them directly?
Yeah.
So we're not going based off the letter?
No, not at all. No, we have to really sit down and, and I was actually thinking, you know, with, that myself and Carly would sit down, start that process, continue that conversation, and see where it takes us. And then we also have a letter of appreciation from Commander Stan Martin of the Nicholas P. Lassando Jr., Warwick American Legion Post 214, a letter of appreciation to the village clerk, to Reina Abramson, for the work that she does in terms of administrative work, you know, getting things like a Memorial Day parade fully orchestrated so that it goes smoothly. And I just want to shout out to Stan Martin and to the American Legion for the wonderful parade that they put on this past weekend, so it was, or last Monday. I also want to take a moment and introduce the board to Chief Raider, who's here in that capacity for the first time. And Chief, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and I wanted to say that I think you're already, you hit the ground running, and if you don't mind, if you could give the board just a sense of what the academy, the youth academy project is about, I think they would be, they would love to hear it.
So we're starting, for the first time, a junior police academy this summer. It's going to run the July 11th through the 22nd. It's open to 10 to 15-year-olds from the Warwick-Gremaud Lake and Florida school districts. Over that 10-day period, our school resource officers, instead of coming back onto the road for the summer, will be our instructors. So the, our recruits are going to learn a lot about law enforcement, but they're also going to learn other aspects attached to us. They're going to meet the fire department, they're going to go on a trip to the 911 center. Each day is going to have an educational component, a fun component. It is summer vacations, they are kids. It'll have a physical component, and then they're going to do a community project. I'm not sure what they're going to task them with, but we've given them a bunch of ideas of something to do to give back to the community. So the cutoff was last Friday. We've exceeded what we could take in the first academy.
Question.
Question.
Sorry.
And we've now opened up a second academy during the first two weeks in August, and we're hoping to fill that up as well.
That's great.
And how do kids get, how do they sign up? How do they become aware?
So we announced it to the three school districts. There's a poster, it's on our Facebook page, Town of Warwick, New York Police Department, and it's a QR code. If they're unable to do that for whatever technology reasons, there are applications available in the schools, and they write an essay that our SROs will review, and their acceptance goes along that way. Each day they'll probably present some sort of news event, so they're going to get some confidence, standing up in front of others and talking. They'll bond, especially with the three school districts, so they make new relationships, and we hope to send them home tired every night so the parents thank us for the two weeks of exercise. But they'll learn how to march, they'll learn a lot of stuff we learned in the police academy on the physical training side, but not to the extent. So we're excited about it.
I think it's great. It's a great project.
Thank you.
And I also want to comment that the bike patrol is coming back to the community, which has been really a great thing within our walkable village, and also that there's more foot patrols.
We're excited about the bike patrol as well. That was an effective tool years ago, so we're happy to bring that back. Senator Martucci and WTVQ and all kinds of other things have put together some funding for us to do it, and we have two new bikes plus the four ones we had before, and counting myself, who really needs to get back in shape, there's 18 officers that have put in for it.
Oh, great.
So over the summer, you'll see us pedaling around. I'll be the one that did the figulator be followed.
We could maybe get a mini one to put right on.
So we can be down by passion.
But, well, it's great for us as a community, you know, we're so active, every weekend is just, you know, there's something going on somewhere, but our parks particularly, and to get from one park to the other, it's a pretty simple bike ride, and, you know, you can clearly see a lot going on when you're on your bike, so.
Well, we can, probably on a weekend, we'll be able to get down Main Street, try to run a bicycle.
At this point, yes, I think so, yes.
I have a quick question about that. So the bike patrol, when it was active previously, was there, did you all communicate kind of with the village about where you thought improvements could be made, and sort of our plans and the bikeability? I think that would be really helpful, because if you guys are on your bikes riding around a lot.
Yeah, I can't say that we did that before, but of course, that's a good idea to see what's good about bike riding around.
You could get, like, reported in some. Yeah, what's working, what's not working.
Or what events or activities that may not, may be a little bit under the radar, they're not big events, but they're there, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I like that idea.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So now we're, we'll open it up to the floor.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Before you did, you wanted me to remind you about June 3rd, Juneteenth?
Oh, okay, yes. We can do that now. So the next board meeting is June 20th, I don't have that information in front of me.
20th.
20th, which is the day that Juneteenth is, will be celebrated nationally, and I feel that we should not have a public meeting that evening. The only hitch is that there is a, if we move it to the next week, to the next Monday, the comprehensive master plan committee is meeting that Monday. And I did reach out to Peter Fairweather, and he's fine to moving his meeting, the comprehensive master plan meeting, to Tuesday. So what I'd like to know is the availability of the board on that Monday, which is the 20th.
Monday is the 20th.
But the following.
27th.
27th.
I'm free. I was supposed to be at the Conclam meeting.
That's right.
And so is Tom.
And so is Tom, so you're there.
And so is Barry.
So you're good. Okay. So.
I used to, just a question. Oftentimes when we're blocked out for President's Day and Labor Day, we do it on Tuesday after. Is there a problem with that?
Yeah, our council can't be there.
Okay.
That would be normally a meeting, we would have our council at, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll open it up to privilege of the floor. If you'd like to speak to the board, raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Kurhulik, please state your name and.
My name is Robert Kurhulik. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am the owner of several businesses at Two Bank Street, Beatty Kurhulik Law Firm, and the title agency real estate company. I rent a number of my parking spaces to merchants that maintain stores on Railroad Avenue, and I also allow some of the local realtors, as a courtesy of parking, my parking lot at Two Bank Street as well. I'm here to appeal to you tonight to reconsider the closure of Bank Street during the farmers' market. For some 20 years, we were able to coexist with the farmers' market without the need to close Bank Street, and all of a sudden, safety issues arose, and it wasn't just a matter of volume or the popularity of the market, it's been popular for many, many years. But two things happened. First thing that happened is that pedestrian crosswalks were painted literally down the middle of Bank Street, and on the east side of Bank Street, once you get beyond the bridge, that's two-way traffic, and somebody made the assumption that it's one-way traffic, which is incorrect. So the painting of those stripes out in the middle of the street literally sends pedestrians into the flow of traffic. That was problem number one. Problem number two is mismanagement of the market itself. With the painting of the lines, vendors were then allowed to set their tents up out into the pedestrian walkway, taking advantage of every square inch that they could, forcing pedestrians to now walk outside of the walkway, literally down the center of the street. I believe that better management and better traffic control for both pedestrian and car traffic along Bank Street would allow us to coexist, the businesses on Bank Street, as well as the market itself. If this matter had been reviewed under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, you as a board would have been forced to consider some of these issues. For example, here's some of the questions that the applicant should be asked before permission is given to them to do what they're doing. On the long form EAF, here's a question. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services? The answer to that is yes. We see it every Sunday morning. When is peak traffic expected? Well, we know the answer to that. Here's a question that should be asked of the applicant. For commercial activities, and this is a commercial activity, we call it a farmers' market, it is agricultural-based, but people are down there making money. For commercial activities, projected number of truck trips and the type of trucks, the number of parking spaces that presently exist, the number of parking spaces that would be proposed, we lose dozens of parking spaces as a result of the farmers' market. And what is the net increase and decrease? Here's a question. Does the proposed action include any shared use parking? Well, it takes up an entire parking lot of shared use parking. So I suggest the board needs to do a better job of vetting out some of these issues. I think the farmers' market should be required to mitigate some of these issues, specifically the impact it has on our businesses, on parking. I have about 15 parking spaces lost. There's well over 30 parking spaces in the parking lot itself. That's some 45 parking spaces that are lost. I have some tenants who are very unhappy. They ask me, where am I supposed to park my car on Sunday morning? I'm paying you money for a parking space, and now I can't get to my parking space. I used to go down and mow the lawn around my office on Sundays. I used to bring garbage to my dumpster on Sundays. I can't do any of that. I'm often asked, Bob, what are you going to do with that building? It's such a special location. You could really create something special there. I have absolutely no motivation to do anything right now. I thought about putting an apartment on perhaps the second and third floor for myself. I thought it'd be great to live downtown. Look what the Nazaris did with their rooftop patio overlooking the railroad avenue festivities. But why would I live there? If I can't get to and from my own parking lot on Sunday mornings, what am I supposed to do? And the village has now offered parking for me or my tenants. Where are they supposed to go? So I would ask you to perhaps put a committee together to look at some of these issues. I think proper barriers, I think better traffic control for both pedestrians, better signage would create a safe atmosphere for both the farmers' market, for the pedestrians, and for the local businesses, not just thrive to exist. Poor Bill. The farmers' market is supposed to close at 2:00. I've been down there beyond 3:00. The pizza truck is still there, trying to sell every last pie they can until they finally get kicked out of there. So it's not like, okay, 2:00, now it's, Bank Street is open, everybody can go down and get to their office. That's not really the case. We could, and sometimes we force the issue just to be obnoxious about it, but it shouldn't be that way. And I've seen other applicants who are granted permission to run festivals, and the board has always been very strict. We give you permission to run your event till 2:00, and at 2:00, it's over. That doesn't happen with the farmers' market. And I just use these as small examples of small incremental changes that could be made that would again allow us to coexist like we've done for over 20 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The one thing, though, you talk about an EAF, that's a planning document. That would be for a planning board application.
It has to do with a land use application, and the village is granting a land use approval to the Chamber of Commerce and to the farmers' market, whatever entity.
A temporary.
It's a facility use approval.
Yeah.
It's not a land, it's not a land use approval.
Well, that might be tested, so we'll save that for another event if we have.
Okay. We'll talk to the firemen about that.
You can't close it every Sunday and say, oh, this is temporary. It's every Sunday.
It's 28 Sundays. Can I continue?
Yes, of course, yes.
I'm Bill Arado, and I own Tex Wine and Spirits at One Bank Street across from Two. And, well, we've been through this before, we were here, whatever, four years ago, and we talked about putting a fence along the tracks, which you did, and it has stopped people from going, there's a tremendous amount less people now crossing back and forth Bank Street. One big issue is that they set up two tents on Bank Street, and somebody sets up a table for people to eat on Bank Street. Now technically, 2:00, boom, Bank Street's open, and, but it never is. You know, actually, my employee ran out there and opened it at 2:00 the other day, and he said there were no issues. I, he did not even, I didn't even ask him if he, I didn't even think about saying any cars, but, you know, if nothing else, I mean, we put that fence up, or the village put the fence up along the thing, many people. Years ago, you were supposed to paint the sidewalk that went from the sidewalk in front of the caboose up to the sidewalk by Kukun Brothers, so that, much like the sidewalk that was painted in the parking lot, so people knew to stay on a painted sidewalk, you were going to put in a crosswalk from Railroad Avenue over to Kukun Brothers, and I think on both ends of Railroad Avenue you were going to put in, because people, I mean, talk about safety, people walk in front of cars on South Street, and you know, you know that. People just walk from between the two parking lot, or the big, the chase lot and the Kukun Lot, people just walk across the street like, boom, it's their street. I've had people just walk in front of my car when I was driving, it's, you know, it's crazy.
And it's for that reason that we thought it was judicious to close that street for that period of time, because.
But you don't close South Street.
Well.
Most, I mean, well, first of all, there's no parking on Bank Street. All the parking, you're talking about, I don't know, maybe 100, 110 spots between Kukun Brothers and the parking lot? Do the parking lot have like 78 or 80 spots? Kukun's got to have another 20, 25 there. So all the parking's over there, and everybody's walking back and forth, South Street paying no attention to, there's only one crosswalk anyway. You know, well, there's two, I'm sorry, one at each entrance of the parking lot. But it's just not fair to me. I mean, I'm totally, it's 28 Sundays, two hours, probably three hours for the actually open, I mean, that's, that's half of my whole day being open on a Sunday. You know, and it's, it's just not fair to me, you know? And there's things that can be done. I mean, you put the fence in front of the tracks, if you put that, all those orange fence that the village has now bought, if you put them on the outside of the crosswalk that you put in the thing, and make sure that, you know, I mean, both the pizza, Emily at the pizza place and Annette, they basically are on the, on the crosswalk. But if you put a fence on the outside and make them move in so that nobody is on the crosswalk, and then put the orange fence all the way down, everybody would then have to enter in from South Street into the lot and go back out that way. There'd be, yes, there will be people, some people walking up and down Bank Street, but it's, that's like the other six days of the week, people are walking up and down Bank Street anyway, there's cars coming up and down. I've been in that building 30 years, and nobody's ever gotten hit that I know of. You know, I mean, more people have fallen because they don't see the curb, that when the village put up the sidewalk around my building, more people have walked, fallen off that sidewalk. I remember when Frank Fattino, and he came and complained to you, and you went over there and fixed the, you fixed the sidewalk in certain places. But, you know, it's just not fair to me, you know? It's my business, Rosie wants her, she has her business upstairs. I mean, she, she's a real estate agent, and she can't get into her, she can't even get into her office. I mean, God knows where she has to park, or to meet somebody, say, hey, can you meet me at 11:00 in my office? And they're like, well, we can't get there. It's, you know, it's just overall not fair to us businesses. I mean, we're the one that pays the taxes. Farmers' market pays zero. I mean, the farmers' market costs the village money, I mean, we clean up all their garbage every Monday, I've been watching it for 30 years, you know, and it costs the village money to have the farmers' market. And, you know, and I'm the one that's paying the taxes, Bob's paying the taxes, and part of Rosie's goes to taxes too, so, but, you know, I don't.
I think, you know.
You do know.
I do know. But, you know, and I go back to what Bob says, to create a committee. Now, the things that have changed are these, that there is greater attendance of the market. We're hearing reports of, you know, just large, large attendance, and that's, you know, that has grown year by year. There was some off-years, but then, since then, it's really expanded. COVID actually made it expand greatly, and we had a bridge that was dysfunctional. We had no sidewalks for a certain point of time on that bridge, and then finally, it was shut down. So there were a lot of things that were happening, a lot of moving parts. Safety was definitely the criteria, the important piece, but there's no reason why we can't have that discussion with the farmers' market. So I think that's definitely worthwhile.
You know, I mean, the big thing, the big issue was people crossing back and forth, crossing the tracks and walking across back and forth. They can't do that if you make it so they can't do that. If you make them walk out to South Street, they're not going to walk back up and then, you know, walk back up actually, I mean, because, like I said, 100% of the parking is over on, or maybe 90% of the parking is between Chase Bank and Kukun Brothers, and some people park it on Main Street and Railroad Avenue, and Railroad Avenue's another one. People just walk down the middle of the street. I was driving down the street the other day, whatever, there was a guy with, pushing his stroller, he was in the middle of Railroad Avenue, or in the middle of the one lane, and I'm behind him, and I'm like, what are you doing? And he's, the sidewalk is right there. You know, it's, it's crazy, so.
I would, I would say, or, I'm sorry, Bob, do you want to add one more?
Just one more thought. I understand the attractiveness of the South Street parking lot, and at one point in time was concerned over the viability of the market if they weren't there, but they've grown to a point now, we've reached that tipping point where everybody knows the market's there, it's as popular as ever, maybe now's the time to move it across the street to the Chase parking lot, which doesn't hurt the businesses on Bank Street anymore, solves that problem, and I'll tell you what, I think it would be a lot safer over to that lot too, so if you're really concerned about safety, that's the answer.
Well, that could be, that could come out of a small committee and a conversation with the farmers' market. That was brought up to them many years ago.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
And they, they didn't go for it for whatever reasons, but, I mean, the other thing too is to understand, yes, they do take up that space, that time, but they are a catalyst, they are an economic catalyst to our community. I would say before the farmers' market, 75% of the stores that are open on Sunday were not open, and they're open because there is, there are people, it's a draw, and the restaurants do better, everyone does better, and.
Except for me.
Except for you and Bob, so.
And Rosie.
And Rosie. Rosie, do you want to say a few words?
I do, actually, because most of my business, of course, Rosie wants her loyalty, is during the weekend, and I am in and out, and clients will stop in and say, can I see you? And I'm like, I have to spend 20 minutes looking for a parking spot, and I have, and going through the same exact thing that Bill just said, the traffic on South Street of pedestrians is chaotic. It is, I don't know why, because I think they think they can walk onto Bank Street without any restrictions, then they pour out into South Street, they think it's, the whole street's closed. So it's almost like a continuation of chaos, because it is chaos, even when I'm walking in and out, and it just, it really does affect my business. There are times when I want to go in, I have to think, I can't. It's 2:00, and again, it's pouring over into 3:00, so now it's 3:00, I can't even get into my office. So it's just a whole entire day that I lose for my business, and I am busy on weekends, so it just, it does affect us.
Yes, and I appreciate, I'm glad you came tonight. I mean, that's.
Thank you.
So we have to look at it, and so we'll put, we'll put a committee together. Which of you would like to be a representative on that committee?
Bill will go.
Oh, Bob, your slide.
But to that end, Bill, I, since you've been volunteered, I would ask, as a starting point, if you could diagram out what your thoughts are. I mean, I was following you as you were saying it, but you're talking about crosswalk here, crosswalk there.
There's a copy somewhere in here from about four years ago.
Right. I mean, we have people who have been invited to this village for a long time with these ideas, so let's take advantage of that, if you could draw it out.
I think the one thing you should do right away before, well, first of all, they close Bank Street at 7:00 in the morning, you know? So, because I had to get into my store the other day at about 7:15, 7:20, and the street was already blocked off, you know, so I had to go. You know, so I had to go around onto South Street and move a cone to get in. So, and, uh... And so like Bob was saying, you know, his employees are now taking up parking spaces that could be for other people. Because if they get there at 10 o'clock, they can't even get in to Bank Street anymore. You know, they'd have to move, they, they put the yellow tape, they put cones. You know, so the people from Railroad Avenue who, who rent spaces from Bob can't even get in there at all. So now they're taking up more parking spaces.
Right.
So, it's a little bit of everything.
Yeah, okay.
But I will, who's gonna be on the committee with me?
Well, we'll figure that out. We'll get back to you. We'll draw straws around the table here. Okay, well, again, thank you for coming this evening and voicing your concerns, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to just address the board, um, here tonight with Frankie Bryson.
Hi Frankie.
From the Coalition, members of the Community Center, for their support. Something I said.
Thank you.
Um, we'd like to talk to the Village Board tonight about National Night Out.
Yes.
Uh, National Night Out this year is on August 2nd. Uh, it's a, it's a night where the community and law enforcement and other stakeholders can engage in fun events. The, uh, the Community Center and the Coalition for years has celebrated National Night Out at the Community Center on a, on a smaller scale. Communities our size, larger and smaller, have celebrated National Night Out on a, on a larger scale. And this year, we're asking to do that as well. We would like to do it at Memorial Park. I downloaded the...
Welcome to our world.
I have a letter here outlining it from, uh, well, it's actually two letters from me. But it, uh, we're partnering with the Coalition, where the town of Warwick is on board with partnering with us. We're here tonight, not for definite answer, not to put you down the spot, but we're asking the village to partner with us as well.
Okay.
Uh, that would be figuring out how we do the proper insurance and everything else. But our main goal, hopefully, is to get this through this month. So we can do the, have the month of July to really advertise this and make it a community event. Uh, we're looking, again, August 2nd, from roughly 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Frankie can outline some of the activities that we're looking to do. Uh, and also in our request, asking the village to have any, uh, any fees incurred, uh, involved with the, uh...
Yeah, of course. It's on the agenda tonight.
As Chief Reader said, uh, National Night Out enhances the relationships between the law enforcement, the community, um, and all its youth. So, uh, myself, Carrie, and Vanessa, one of our Coalition members, have come up with numerous activities that we'd like to offer the community. One would be a touch of truck event. Uh, we'd like to get the fire department, EMS, police department, all involved. Um, we'd like to have live music, whether it be a DJ or local, um, youth bands. Um, I thought that would be really cute. Um, face painting, uh, live demonstrations from the police department, maybe even UMAC. Food cooked by the police department and donated, hopefully, by ShopRite. Um, and then I reached out to a, um, new business. Um, and they provide a 40-foot blow-up batting cage. Um, it has, um, a small machine that pitches foam, star foam balls, so nobody can really get hurt. Um, they provide the bats, uh, and I've got a bunch of helmets donated.
That's great. Sounds like fun.
That sounds great.
So, I'll, uh, I'll turn this application tomorrow.
Okay.
To the Village Clerk.
Okay.
Uh, I understand now that you're meeting on the 27th, but if we could, you know, among yourselves, you could just discuss this. And hopefully, we meet with some sort of approval on the 27th. And we'll, uh, we'll hit it hard to advise the community, but we, we think that this will be...
Is that enough time, Chief?
What's happening?
Is that enough time if it's approved on 27th?
I don't know, if you said tonight was just, we'd be, we're all in.
Yeah, I'm ready to hit the ground.
I think we could, we could actually make that determination tonight.
I have one more component to add to this.
Yes, what is that?
That may actually make this, if you can expedite it quicker. I have partial grant written already.
Okay.
That I need the final components of the decision to finish. That will give us quite a bit of funding for it if we can, and I need to finish the grant.
So just going back to the sponsorship, which I understand that, um, what would be entitled, you know, would be entailed as to our, you know, what do you need from us? I mean, we...
Just your approval.
Just your, our approval.
Since it's on village property, we were just requesting your approval. The police department and the Community Center and Coalition will do all the legwork. Uh, the town, again, is the same part, whatever insurances, you know, we're gonna need in place, or whatever.
Whatever the village requires for the permit, which requires the insurance and all this, all the permit fees and all of that. Everything that you need on that permit is what we require from you.
Okay.
That's what we're really asking for, is your permission.
How many people do you estimate would show up to this event?
We're hoping for 300 to 400. It's our first time, so that's...
We will have the 200-plus application.
Yeah.
So...
And there's, so on that, in that sense, the permit asks for quarter potters and things like that, and that's the other request. We're not sure about the facility's use of the bathrooms and things. That's totally up to you guys.
Right.
I had to check off that we would need the bathrooms over there.
Right, we need the bathrooms.
And we would, we would center it around, around that part of the park.
Okay.
So, that's...
So the pavilion area, or where, um...
Yeah, well, the baseball area.
Beyond the baseball.
Baseball area, where the lights are and all of that, yep.
Just a quick note on...
Go towards the concession stand. I think that's where the bathroom, where the bathrooms.
There's numerous bathrooms, actually, yeah.
The village has its own bathrooms up by the pavilion.
It would probably be from that area on, because with the fire department involved, the trucks and the EMS and all of that. And they're gonna all have demonstrations. So we're gonna need that area from the, from the baseball, uh, fields up.
Where are you gonna put parking?
Well, the parking is gonna be where the carnival parking usually is for the people.
In the grass?
Yeah, I was thinking of the...
From that way up, yeah, yeah.
Weather permitting. I, I, I'm just...
And the pavilion parking lot.
And, you know, a lot of brainstorming goes into these things. But what I pictured was beginning the activities at the, um, end of the ba, basically the end of the baseball fields and the end of the parking lot. That's across from the baseball fields, not around the, um... Concession stand.
Okay.
You could line up the trucks, the touch of trucks on, on that paved area all the way up. And then you can use the whole field on either side to have whoever else is there wanting to interact with the public.
That's kind of what you're talking about, right? Um, so the, the road coming in, and then from where the first baseball field on the left, the football field, baseball field there, where the carnival usually is? Where the carnival usually is.
The carnival is usually in the, in the, beyond that in the parking lot anymore, yeah?
I haven't been to carnival.
Yeah.
I know. I'm like, wait a minute, I remember.
You remember it, Sam.
I, I understand what you're saying. We can, we can map it out. We'll look at, and I'll be happy to...
What we were talking about was that we were hoping, since the fire department is gonna be a large part of this, that, that they would be also managing, because their trucks will be there, they would also be managing the parking, um, thing. As, as with all the trucks and that.
As well as the PD. So, um, we're willing, you know, going forward to work out those parts, the logistics with you? I mean, if you're, if you're talking about 300 to 400 people, you're talking about a lot of cars. Couple hundred cars.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and so to, you know, kind of block off that one big section of parking that, that we have, that big lot that's across from the ballfields, um, you know, would be kind of doing it to service to the people that wanna come. You're right. We can, we can, uh, since this is the first time, we can, we can certainly move it up to that area.
Keep brainstorming and get talking about it and see what might work.
And that's, that's why we chose that since Memorial Park, because that really has the biggest footprint for us.
Just a quick note on sort of the demonstrations and activities that you mentioned. I know you mentioned UMAC, but there's also two other martial arts academies, Chosun. And then I know there's a, a lot of police from NYPD that attend the jujitsu, and so Gracie, so...
Yeah.
Just to think about those guys too.
They could all be there.
I think it's gonna be great. I, I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful project.
The whole point of it is to get, it's, it's not a, um, commercial thing. It's really about the community coming out to see what services are available in their own community.
That's right.
So it's, it's a free event for the community to find out about their community.
Yeah, it's not just for police. It should be for all.
Yeah, it's, it's about the police department, yeah.
What about, um, what about like DPW and the water and wastewater treatment?
You didn't tell them there, about the trucks and all of that.
I said touch of truck.
Not just the touch of truck, the tractors and all. Oh, yeah, tell them about that part.
So, that part is...
Yeah, you should, you should tell them about that part.
Yeah, I know, it's exciting. I mean, like, everybody wants to help and, and bring on their trucks. So, you know, the Wright barn is bringing tractors and a school bus and cycling and traveling.
Okay, well, we might, we might be able to bring up...
I was gonna call Tony over at the DPW.
There you go, there you go.
But the what, you know, we have a water treatment facility in the park. And so if we had like a, we used it as an opportunity, not to show people the treatment facility. But to talk about our infrastructure and the people that are keeping the community running in that way, you know?
That's a good idea.
So, the whole idea is community engagement.
Yeah.
I think that's, this is gonna be our first one at a larger scale. We'll have some bugs to work out, and next year, we'll be smooth as...
But the whole, yes, the whole thing is for everybody to, you know, the kids to come in and see what the community's about. And everybody will somehow interact with the kids. And we were thinking about doing some sort of a bingo or a, like a, um, so you go around, you gather, like a passport. Yeah, the passport, and each place would give them something, or stamp their card. And then when they come back to the Coalition table, like we did with the mask-up project. And the winners would get something, which is probably gonna be almost everybody. So...
Well, I think it's...
Coalition swag. Local preschools have got a craft or something for kids. Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, as far as, I, I have a feeling there's a consensus that we're going to move forward with, uh, supporting you guys. We do, you know, can give you the help of our Department of Public Works for setup and, you know, cleanup as well, so...
Absolutely, thank you.
How, how do we, how do we motion that without having the application? We're gonna be contingent on...
It can be contingent upon the application. I think what, what the idea here is that we're moving forward and we are part of it.
Right.
And so, the application will work.
We'll make sure every i is dotted and t is crossed.
Well, there's, I guess there's two things that we need to, to vote on. Co-sponsoring it, and second, the facility's use permit. Or do you not need the facility's permit?
No, that's not, well, that's not ready yet, so that, I don't, I don't think we need it yet. I mean, once they get it figured out, you know, once they...
I can, I can turn, uh, part one and what, what's been completed to Reyna. And then we'll work out on what, uh, what needs, what needs to be done afterwards. And the map will finalize as far, we'll, you know, we'll walk it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you need to understand how many trucks you've got, where they can fit and how they can fit.
I think the most important thing is they need us to raise our hand to say, yeah, we're in. So the grant can be written and we can move forward.
And start advertising.
Yeah.
And hope for good weather for that night.
How do we motion that to say that we're in? Or is that, can't you say it, we're in?
I, I don't know, I think absent an application, it's, it would be difficult for us to act on, um, an approval tonight.
Well, we could say that we motioned to move forward in partnership with the police department to, you know, um, to co-sponsor the National Night Out event.
Pending receipt of...
Pending receipt.
That's kind of vague.
Completed application.
Pending receipt. What, what do you need for the grant? Like, what does it need to say?
Well, I need to, I need to be able to, to tell the, the date, the time, all of that, because it's a formal application for a grant.
What does a grant do?
When I send it in. I've got it pretty much written, but I can't...
But there's a deadline, huh?
On, 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 no, no, I'm not, sorry, on the...
Is this with the Youth Bureau? Is this the third round with the Youth Bureau?
No.
Did you see that?
Huh?
The, the, there's, the, I think the Youth Bureau's got a second or third round. Okay, you're, you're in on that.
Yeah, no, this is not Youth Bureau. This is another grant that's from a, actually a, um, a, a commercial, um, from a company that...
That sponsors National Night Out.
Well, absent a, uh, a formal motion, are we wrong going forward with filling, finishing out the grant and advertising? Start beginning our advertising process?
Um, I think, I, I think that what Carly stated, pretty, even though it might be vague, it sounds like it's enough to at least say, okay, we're, we're supporting this. And, you know, from what I hear, there's nothing, I mean, you're, you have a lot of logistics to figure out. That'll be done through the, through that process, and that will be voted on, on the 27th. And there'll be discussions maybe with Barry or other board members as to, you know, what, if you need that help or that information, so...
So, so motion to declare intent?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Can I ask Carrie a question?
Sure.
What specifically do you need for your application?
I'm gonna write the grant and just hope for the best.
But, but, or do you, do you need...
What I wanted was to...
A resolution from us that says something.
What I needed to know was that you guys were gonna, were gonna partner, so I can put everything on there, so I don't feel like I'm lying.
Do you need a, a letter from my office? Do you need, would that...
I don't wanna do that until it's formal, so I'm just gonna write it from the Community Center and say what we're doing. And, um, I don't wanna write something that's not completely true.
Well, no, if we do a resolution tonight that we're going to support this initiative, then I can write...
Can you do that? I mean, if you feel like you can do something like that, then I would love to put that in there.
Maybe we can have, make a motion that we're supportive of the National Night Out initiative.
To be held on August 2nd in Memorial Park.
If you can do that, that would be awesome.
Something to something.
5:30, 8:30.
Details to be worked out later.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Because obviously, the, the application, we're gonna want the part longer, so we can have setup in a string of time, so...
Don't put that part in there.
The times would be from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. We're gonna pack all these activities in 3 hours.
Reinhard's truck drove.
Which organization would be submitting the application to the village?
The police department.
Okay, so out of all that discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to support National Night Out from, on August 2nd at Memorial Park, from 5:30 to 8:30. Pending logistics and submittal of all appropriate documentation.
2nd.
Okay, who are in favor?
All right. All right. Thank you.
There we go.
Way to go, Carly, off the cuff.
Carly, good motion maker.
This is, this sounds really exciting, and it's really wonderful to see. I'm super excited. Especially if we can find a way to get the wastewater and water...
You'll, you'll be in charge of that.
People need to know, you know, kids need to know.
Our Park Master Plan Committee could get some good information that evening, that day.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We'll make sure this...
Yeah, we could do an engage, a little engagement session about the park, because we'll be in it.
So you're gonna, you're gonna broadly advertise this to the entire town, including Greenwood Lake and Florida.
Yes, Greenwood Lake actually isn't doing National Night Out this year. I went to there, oh, we went, you were at the same one, so yeah, I'd love for them to.
Yep. You know, we, again, other communities in the past have done, our size are bigger or smaller.
Yeah.
Have done this on this scale, so it would be, it would be town-wide. Greenwood Lakes in the past, they've, they've had a pretty large one at the, uh, Mooreham Field or, no, with Stanley Field. With Stanley Park, yeah. And, uh, that's, um, that was well-attended. First year was good, second year, thunderstorms. So...
And they do it for 3 hours?
We think that's manageable, um, with people coming home. It's a Tuesday night, so it's a work night. Might be day two of our junior police academy, so we'll have them there as well. If we, if this one takes off, they'll be there as well. So, um, yeah, 3 hours on a, on a Tuesday night should be enough. And that gives us a whole nother year to figure out what was good and what, what wasn't. So next year's is even better.
Cool.
Vernon Coalition does this, um, and they have huge turnout, huge, and there's 3 hours.
I think you're gonna have really good turnout.
Yeah, I did too.
There's a 3 hours. And because it's National Night, National Night Out, everybody's just the same night, so it's not like, you know, we're...
Competing.
Competing.
Right.
Oh, so...
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, for organizations that do wanna participate, who should they reach out to in terms of coordination? You, okay?
Myself, Coalition Coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll put that out there, so they know, um, who to get hold of.
Okay, great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Do you want us to stay for the rest of the one?
No. Unless you have a burning desire.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye-bye.
And then there was one?
It's just me.
Well.
We're glad you're here, yeah.
Now, they're excited, that's good. Okay, we're moving on to motions. So, Mr. Chaney?
Motion to raise the hourly rate for seasonal DPW employee James Quackenbush to eighteen dollars per hour per the request of DPW supervisor Mike Moser.
So moved? Oh, second.
Second.
So just, um. I, I'm not sure why it would warrant raising his and not raising all the seasonals to eighteen dollars an hour.
Can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I understand that, but, um, we have two seasonals now, including Jim, and we will have two more. So that'll be four seasonals altogether. I almost, and one of the seasonal that, that we have has just returned. I think this is his third summer, uh, so he has been a really valuable employee. My thought was to stagger it and that, I'm, Jim is definitely, um, you know, he knows the lay of the land, he does a great job. Uh, and he's a senior employee, he's, he worked for us for, I don't, I can't even remember how many years. And the, the, the second person who's been with us a number of years and has been consistent and a good worker as well. I could see raising either him to that same amount or maybe, right now, they're, they get seventeen dollars an hour to, uh, seventeen dollars an hour. And then the new Bs would come in at sixteen dollars an hour.
Then.
This is not covered by any union contract or anything, so it's.
Why isn't it covered by a union contract?
Uh, they're part-time employees, they're not part of the DPW union, or the Teamsters.
Could we go into executive session?
Uh, sure we can, okay, could I have a?
Or is we do it at the end?
Uh, no, I, we could do it now, it won't, it won't take, I don't think terribly long, right?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
The one.
The medical, financial, yeah. So, would you just make that motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session for the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation.
Great, have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, do you mind, uh, I'd rather stay in this room if possible, if, if you could just go into the, on the veranda. Uh, it's a nice night and, uh, and if you wouldn't mind going to the office.
Yes, I just need an official ayes.
Oh, aye.
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 Thank you.
Through the street, I've been driving down the street, um, the other day, whatever, there's a guy with it, pushing his stroller. He was in the middle of River Avenue or in the middle of the one lane and I'm behind him. And I'm like, what are you doing? And he's just sidewalking straight there, you know, it's, it's crazy, so.
I, I would, I would say, um, or, I'm sorry, Bob, do you wanna add one more?
Just one more thought. I understand the attractiveness of the South Street parking lot and at one point in time was concerned over the viability of the market if they weren't there. But they've grown to a point now, we've reached that tipping point where everybody knows the market's there, it's as popular as ever. Maybe now's the time to move it across the street to the Chase parking lot, which doesn't hurt the businesses on Bank Street anymore. Solves that problem, and I'll tell you what, I think it'd be a lot safer over to that lot too, so if you're really concerned about safety, that's the answer.
Well, that could be, that could come out of a small committee and a conversation with the farmer's market. That was brought up to them, uh, many years ago.
Yeah, we talked about that.
And, um, they, they didn't go for, for whatever reasons, but, uh, I mean, the other thing too is to understand, yes, they do take up that space, that time. But they are a catalyst, they are an economic catalyst to our community. I would say before the farmer's market, seventy-five percent of the stores that are open on Sunday were not open. And it, they're open because there is, there are people, it's a draw and the restaurants do better, everyone does better.
Except for me.
Except for you and Bob, so. And, and Rosie, Rosie, do you wanna say, say a few words?
I, I do, actually, because, uh, most of my business, of course, Rosie wants a realty, is during the weekend and I am in and out and clients will stop in and say, can I see you? And I'm like, I have to spend twenty minutes looking for a parking spot and I have, and going through the same exact thing that Bill just said. The traffic on South Street of pedestrians is chaotic. It is, I don't know why, because I think they think they can walk onto Bank Street without any restrictions. Then they pour out into South Street, they think it's, the whole street's closed. So it's, it's almost like a continuation of the chaos, cause it is chaos. Even when I'm walking in and out, and it just, it really does affect my business. There are times when I wanna go in, I have to think, I can't, it's two o'clock and again, it's pouring over into three o'clock. So now it's three o'clock, I can't even get into my office. So it's just a whole entire day that I lose for my business, uh, and I am busy on weekends, so it just, it does affect us.
Yes, and I appreciate, I'm glad you came tonight, I mean, that's.
Thank you.
So we have to look at it and, um, so we'll put a, uh, we'll put a committee together. Which of you would like to be a representative on that committee?
Bill will go.
Oh, Bob, you're slight.
But to that end, Bill, I, it, since you've been volunteered, I would ask as a starting point, if you could diagram out what your thoughts are. I mean, I was following you as you're saying it, but you're talking about crosswalk here, crosswalk there.
There's a copy somewhere here from about four years ago.
Right. I mean, we, we, we have people who have been invited to this village for a long time with these ideas, so let's take advantage of that, if you could draw it out.
I think the one thing you should do right away before, is, well, first of all, they closed Bank Street at seven o'clock in the morning, you know? So, cause I had to get into my store the other day at about seven fifteen, seven twenty and the street was already blocked off. You know, so I had to go around onto South Street and move a cone in to get in, so, and, uh. And so like Bob was saying, you know, his employees are now taking up parking spaces that could be for other people. Cause if they get there at ten o'clock, they can't even get in to Bank Street anymore. You know, they'd have to move, they, they put the yellow tape, they put cones, you know, so the people from River Avenue who, who rent spaces from Bob can't even get in there at all, so now they're taking up more parking spaces.
Right.
So, it's a little bit of everything.
Yeah, okay.
But I will, who's gonna be on the committee with me?
Well, we'll figure that out, we'll get back to you. We'll draw straws around the table here. Okay, well, again, thank you for coming this evening and voicing your concerns, so, appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to just address the board, um, here tonight with Frankie Bryson.
Frankie.
From the Coalition, members of the community center, for their support. Something I said.
Thank you.
Um, we'd like to talk to the village board tonight about National Night Out.
Yes.
Uh, National Night Out this year is on August second. It's a, it's a night where the community and law enforcement and other stakeholders can engage in fun events. The, uh, the community center and the Coalition for years has celebrated National Night Out at the community center on a, on a smaller scale. Communities our size, larger and smaller, have celebrated National Night Out on a, on a larger scale. And this year we're asking to do that as well. We would like to do it at Memorial Park, I downloaded the.
Welcome to our world.
I have a letter here, uh, outlining it from, uh, well, it's actually two letters from me, but it, uh. We're partnering with the Coalition, we're, the town of Warwick is on board with partnering with us. We're here tonight, not for definite answer, not to put you on the spot, but we're asking the village to partner with us as well.
Okay.
Uh, that would be figuring out how we do the proper insurance and everything else, but our main goal, hopefully, is to get this through this month. So we can do the, have the month of July to really advertise this and make it a community event. Uh, we're looking, again, August second from roughly five thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Frankie can outline some of the activities that we're looking to do. And also in our request, asking the village to waive any, uh, any fees incurred, uh, involved with the, uh, application.
Yeah, of course. It's on the agenda tonight.
As Chief Raider said, uh, National Night Out enhances the relationships between the law enforcement, the community, um, and all its youth. So, uh, myself, Carrie and Vanessa, one of our Coalition members, have come up with numerous activities that we'd like to offer the community. One would be a touch a truck event, uh, we'd like to get the fire department, EMS, police department all involved. We'd like to have live music, whether it be a DJ or local, um, youth bands, um, I thought that would be really cute. Face painting, uh, live demonstrations from the police department, maybe even UMAC. Food cooked by the police department and donated hopefully by ShopRite. And then I reached out to a, um, new business, um, and they provide a forty-foot glow-up batting cage. It has, um, a small machine that pitches foam, star foam balls, so nobody can really get hurt. They provide the bats, uh, and I've got a bunch of helmets donated.
Yeah, that's great, sounds like fun.
So, I'll, uh, I'll turn this application tomorrow.
Okay.
To the village clerk.
Okay.
I understand now that you're meeting on the twenty-seventh, but if we could, you know, among yourselves, you could just discuss this and hopefully we meet with some sort of approval on the twenty-seventh and we'll, uh, we'll hit it hard to, uh, advise the community, but we, we think that.
Is that enough time, Chief?
What's happening?
Is that enough time if it's approved on the twenty-seventh?
Said tonight, let's just, we'd be, we're all in.
Yeah, I'm ready to hit the ground.
I think we could, we could actually make that determination tonight.
I have one more component to add to this.
Yes. What is that?
That may actually make this, if you can expedite it quicker, I have partial grant written already.
Okay.
That I need the final components of the decision to finish, that will give us quite a bit of funding for it if we can, and I need to finish the grant.
So, so just going back to the sponsorship, which I understand that, um, what would be entitled, you know, would be entailed as to our, you know, what do you need from us? I mean, we.
Just your approval.
Just your, our approval.
Since it's on village property, we were, we were just requesting your approval. The police department and the, uh, community center and Coalition will do all the light work. Uh, the town, again, is the same part, whatever insurances, you know, we're gonna need in place or whatever.
Whatever the village requires for the permit, which requires the insurance and all this, all the permit fees and all of that. Everything that you need on that permit is what we require from you.
Okay.
That's what we're really asking for, is your permission.
How many people do you estimate would show up to this event?
We're hoping for three to four hundred. It's our first time, so that's.
We build out the two hundred plus application.
Yeah.
So.
And there's, so on that, in that sense, that permit asks for court of justice and things like that, and that's the other request. We're not sure about the facility's use of the bathrooms and things, that's totally up to you guys.
Right.
I did check off that we would need the bathrooms over there.
Of course, yeah.
And we would, we would center it around, around that part of the park.
Okay.
So, that's.
So the pavilion area or where, um?
The back part of the park, beyond the baseball.
Baseball area, where the lights are and all of that, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick note on.
Go towards the concession stand, that's, that's where the bathroom, where the bathrooms.
There's a numerous bathrooms, actually, yeah.
The village has its own bathrooms up by the pavilion.
It would probably be from that area on because with the fire department involved, the trucks and the EMS and all of that, and they're gonna all have demonstrations. So we're gonna need that area from the, from the baseball, uh, fields up.
Where are you gonna put parking?
Well, the parking is gonna be where the carnival parking usually is for the people.
In the grass?
Yeah, I was thinking of the.
Probably that way up, yeah.
Weather permitting? I, I, I'm just.
And the pavilion parking lot.
And, you know, a lot of brainstorming goes into these things, but what I pictured was beginning the activities at the, um, end of the ba, basically the end of the baseball fields and the end of the parking lot that's across from the baseball fields, not around the, um.
Concession.
Concession stand.
Okay.
You could line up the trucks, the touch a trucks on, on that paved area all the way up. And then you can use the whole field on either side to have whoever else is there wanting to interact with the public.
That's kinda what you're talking about, right? Um, so that the road coming in and then from where the first baseball field on the left, the football field, the baseball field there, where the carnival usually is. Where the carnival usually is.
The carnival is usually in the, in the, beyond that in the parking lot anymore, yeah.
I haven't been to carnival.
Yeah.
I remember it.
So, I understand what you're saying, we can, we can map it out, we'll look at it.
And I'll be happy to.
What we were talking about was that we were hoping, since the fire department is gonna be a large part of this, that, that they would be also managing, because their trucks will be there, they would also be managing the parking, um, thing, aspect of it with all their trucks and that.
As well as the, the PD, so.
Yes.
Um, we're willing, you know, going forward to work out those parts of the logistics with you.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you're talking about three hundred to four hundred people, you're talking about a lot of cars.
Couple hundred cars.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and, and so to, you know, kinda block off that one big section of parking that, that we have, that big lot that's across from the ball fields, um, you know, would be kinda doing it to service to the people that wanna come.
You're right.
We can, we can, uh, since this is the first time, we can, we can certainly move it up to that area.
Keep brainstorming and.
Keep talking about it and see what, what might work.
Yeah, actually.
And that's, that's why we chose veterans Memorial Park, because that really has the biggest footprint force.
Just a quick note on sort of the demonstrations and activities that you mentioned, I know you mentioned UMAC, but there's also two other martial arts academies, uh, Chosun and then I know there's a, a lot of police from NYPD that attend the jujitsu, and so Gracie, so.
Yeah.
Just to think about those guys too.
They could all be there.
I think it's gonna be great, I, I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful project.
The whole point of it is to get, it's, it's not a, um, commercial thing, it's really about the community coming out to see what services are available in their own community.
That's right.
So it's, it's a free event for the community to find out about their community.
Yeah, it's not just for police, it should be for all.
Yeah.
It's first responders, the.
Department, yeah.
What about, um, what about like DPW and the water and wastewater treatment?
You didn't tell them there about the trucks and all of it.
I said touch a truck.
Cause the water.
Not just the touch a truck, the tractors and all.
Oh, yeah, tell them about that part.
So. Yeah, you, you tell them about that part. Yeah, I know, it's exciting, I mean, like, everybody wants to help and, and bring on their trucks, so, you know, the Wright barn is bringing tractors and get a school bus and cycling.
Okay, well, we might, we might be able to bring up.
I was gonna call Tony over at the DPW.
There you go, there you go.
But the what, you know, we have a water treatment facility in the park, and so if we had like a, we used it as an opportunity, not to show people the treatment facility. But to talk about our infrastructure and the people that are keeping the community running in that way, you know?
It's a good idea.
Sure.
The whole idea is community engagement.
Yeah.
I think that's, this is gonna be our first one at a larger scale, we'll have some bugs to work out and next year we'll be smooth as.
But the whole, yes, the whole thing is for everybody to, you know, the kids to come in and see what the community is about.
Yeah.
And everybody will somehow interact with the kids and we were thinking about doing some sort of a bingo or a like a, um, so you go around.
Scavenged, like a passport, right?
Yeah, the passport, and each place would give them something or stamp their card.
Like a stamp.
And then when they come back to the coalition table.
Cool.
Like we did with the mask up project.
Mm-hmm.
And the winners would get something which is probably gonna be almost everybody. So.
But I think it's.
Coalition swag.
Schools have got a craft or something for kids.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a- as far as, I, I have a feeling there's a consensus that we're going to move forward with, uh, supporting you guys. We do, you know, can give you the help of our Department of Public Works, um, for setup and, you know, cleanup as well, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
How, how do we, how do we motion that without having the application? We're gonna be contingent on. to be contingent on-
It can be contingent upon the application. I think what, what the idea here is that we're moving forward and we are part of it.
Right.
And so the application-
We'll make sure every I is dotted and T is crossed.
Well, I guess there's two things that we need to, to vote on, co-sponsoring it. And second, the facilities use permit. Or do you not need the facilities permit?
No, that's not, well, that's not ready yet. So that, I don't think we need it yet. I mean, once they get it figured out, you know, once they-
I can, I can turn part one and what, what's been completed to Reyna, and then we'll work out on what, what needs, what needs to be done afterwards. And the map will finalize as far, we'll, you know, we'll walk it. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you need to understand how many trucks you've got, where they can fit and how they can fit.
I think the most important thing is they need us to raise our hand to say, yeah, we're in, so the grant can be written and we can move forward.
And start advertising.
Yeah.
And hope for good weather for that night.
How do we motion that to say that we're in? Or is that, can't you say it, we're in?
I, I don't know. I think absent an application, it's, it would be difficult for us to act on an approval tonight.
Well, we could say that we motioned to move forward in partnership with the police department to, you know, to co-sponsor the National Night Out event.
Pending receipt of-
Pending receipt of-
That's kind of big.
Completed application.
Pending receipt. What, what do you need for the grant? Like, what does it need to say?
Well, I need to, I need to be able to, to tell the, the date, the time, all of that, because it's a formal application for a grant.
When's the grant due?
When I send it in. I've got it pretty much written, but I-
But there's a deadline, right?
On a non, on a, sorry, on a non-
Is this with the Youth Bureau? Is this the third round with the Youth Bureau?
No.
Okay. Did you see that?
Huh?
The, the, there's, I think the Youth Bureau's got like a second or third round. Okay, you're, you're in on that.
Yeah, no, this is not a Youth Bureau. This is another grant that's from, actually a, a commercial from a company that sponsors, that sponsors National Night Out.
Well, absent a, a formal motion, are we wrong going forward with filling, finishing out the grant and advertising, starting beginning our advertising process?
I think, I, I think that what Carly stated, pretty, even though it might be vague, it sounds like it's enough to at least say, okay, we're, we're supporting this. And, you know, from what I hear, there's nothing, I mean, you, you have a lot of logistics to figure out. That'll be done through the, through that process, and that will be voted on on the 27th. And there'll be discussions maybe with Barry or other board members as to, you know, what, if you need that help or that information, so.
So, so a motion to declare intent?
Yes. That's a good idea.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Carrie question. What specifically do you need for your application?
Well, I'm, I'm going to write the grant and just hope the best.
But, but do you, do you need-
What I wanted was to-
A resolution from us that says something.
Now, what I needed to know was that you guys were going to, were going to partner, so I can put everything on there, so I don't feel like I'm lying.
Do you need a, do you need a letter? Do you need a, a letter from my office? Do you need, would that-
I don't want to do that until it's formal, so I'm just going to write it from the community center and say what we're doing. And I don't want to write something that's not completely true.
Well, no, if we do a resolution tonight that we're going to support this initiative, then I can write-
Can you do that? I mean, if you feel like you can do something like that, then I would love to put that in there.
Maybe we can have, make a motion that we're supportive of the National Night Out initiative.
To be held on August 2nd in Memorial Park.
If you can do that, that would be awesome.
From something to something.
By 3:30.
Details to be worked out later.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Because obviously the, the application, we're going to want the part longer so we can have set up and sign up time, so.
Right. Don't put that word in there.
The times would be from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. We're going to pack all these activities in three hours.
At least try to.
Which organization would be submitting the application to the village?
Okay. Okay, so out of all that discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to support National Night Out from, on August 2nd at Memorial Park from 5:30 to 8:30 pending logistics and submittal of all appropriate documentation.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
There we go.
Way to go, Carly. Off the cuff.
Carly?
Good job.
Good motion maker.
This is, this sounds really exciting and it's really wonderful to see. I'm super excited, especially if we can find a way to get the wastewater and water.
You'll, you'll be in charge of that.
People need to know. No kids need to know.
Our Park Master Plan Committee could get some good information that evening, that day.
Yeah.
We'll make sure this-
Yeah, we could do an engage, a little engagement session about the park, because we'll be in it.
So you're going to, you're going to broadly advertise this to the entire town, including Greenwood Lake and Florida?
Yes, Greenwood Lake actually isn't doing National Night Out this year. I went to their, oh, we went, we were at the same one. So, yeah, I'd love for them to-
Yep. Again, other communities in the past have done, our size are bigger or smaller, have done this on this scale, so it would be, it would be townwide. Greenwood Lakes in the past, they've, they've had a pretty large one at the Moorehand Field or, no, with Stanley Field. With Stanley Park, yeah. And that's, that was well-attended. First year was good, second year thunderstorms.
And they do it for three hours?
We think that's manageable. With people coming home, it's a Tuesday night, so it's a work night. Might be day two of our junior police academy, so we'll have them there as well. If we, if this one takes off, they'll be there as well. So, yeah, three hours on a, on a Tuesday night should be enough. And that gives us a whole nother year to figure out what was good and what, what wasn't. So next year's is even better.
Cool.
Vernon Coalition does this and they have huge turnout, huge. And there's three hours.
I think you're going to have really good turnout.
Yeah, I do, too.
There's a three hours. And because it's national night, at National Night Out, everybody's just the same night, so it's not like, you know, we're-
Right. Competing.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, so.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. For organizations that do want to participate, who should they reach out to in terms of coordination? You, okay?
Myself, Coalition Coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll put that out there so they know when to get hold of.
Okay, great. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
He wants to stay for the rest of the month?
No. Unless you have a burning desire.
My phone's on.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And then there was one.
It's just me.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Yeah.
Oh, they're excited. That's good. Okay, we're moving on to motions. So Mr. Chaney?
Motion to raise the hourly rate for seasonal DPW employee James Quackenbush to $18 per hour per the request of DPW supervisor Mike Moser.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Oh, second.
Second.
So just, I, I'm not sure why it would warrant raising his and not raising all the seasonals to $18 an hour.
Can I just respond to that? I mean, I understand that, but we have two seasonals now, including Jim, and we will have two more. So that'll be four seasonals altogether. I almost, and one of the seasonal that, that we have has just returned. I think this is his third summer. So he has been a really valuable employee. My thought was to stagger it and that, I'm, Jim is definitely, you know, he knows the lay of the land. He does a great job, and he's a senior employee. He's, he worked for us for, I don't, I can't even remember how many years. And the, the, this second person who's been with us a number of years and has been consistent and a good worker as well, I could see raising either him to that same amount or maybe, right now, they, they get $16 an hour to $17 an hour, and then the new Bs would come in at $16 an hour. This is not covered by any union contract or anything, so it's-
Why isn't it covered by a union contract?
Uh, they're part-time employees. They're not part of the DPW union or the Teamsters.
Could we go into executive session?
Sure we can. Okay, could I have a-
Or should we do it at the end?
Uh, no, I, we could do it now. It won't take, I don't think terribly long, right?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
It's one of the personnel.
The medical, financial, yeah. So would you just make that motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session for the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation.
Great. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you mind, I'd rather stay in this room if possible. If, if you could just go into the, on the veranda. It's a nice night, and, and if you wouldn't mind going into the office.
I just need official I's.
Oh, aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, no, I, we could do it now. It won't, it won't take, I don't think terribly long, right?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
It's one of the personnel.
The medical, financial, yeah. So would you just make that motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session for the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation.
Great. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you mind, I'd rather stay in this room if possible. If, if you could just go into the, on the veranda. It's a nice night, and, and if you wouldn't mind going into the office.
I just need official I's.
Oh, aye.
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 Thank you.
We are good.
I'm trying not to, I don't really want to.
Allergies? Yeah, they're killing. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to withdraw the previously stated motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to raise the hourly rate for seasonal DB, DPW employees with two years' experience to $18 per hour.
Okay. Second.
With two years' experience with the Village of Warwick.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
FY 2023 Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program Governing Body Resolution, South Street Sidewalks. The Village of Warwick is hereby submitting its application for consideration under the FY 2023 Orange County, Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program, and the chief elected official or executive officer is hereby authorized to submit this application for South Street Sidewalks project as described in the proposal. Input from citizens and groups has been received and considered, and an application has been prepared which addresses their community concerns. They further certify that they have read and understood the Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Guidelines for the fiscal year 2023 program year and have met all of its applicable requirements, and that the information contained in the application is accurate and true to the best of their knowledge. If awarded CDBG funds, the municipality shall implement the activities in a manner to ensure compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations.
Okay. Second. And a roll call?
Discussion?
Oh, yes, of course, yes.
Can we just quickly remind folks the exact location of the, the sidewalks project?
Um, I can, I can do that. So this year, we are working on a sidewalk project that goes from Second, Second to Third Street. Very involved project, a lot of topography issues, but very needed. And it, obviously, it's about breaking down barriers for handicap accessibility. The same reasoning to move forward. We're going to continue the, that work on to, from Third Street as far as we can to Galloway, and hopefully we can do the full stretch because there's less technical issues. It's a straight run. There's some good sidewalk along the way, but some very bad sidewalk. So it would be that entire part of the village across the street from the park. A very, there's a very well-trodden path from the park to Larry's Deli, and it would be nice to have safe sidewalks to get there. So, so that's, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second. Any, all in favor? Oh, sorry.
Trustee Chaney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bockman?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. And so moved. Carly?
Motion to hire Mike Conklin and Lisa Kevins as additions to the 2022 Summer Recreation Staff per the recommendation of Village of Warwick Recreation Director Ron Intreoni.
Introini.
Introini.
Okay. And the one thing that's not on that motion are their wages. So it would be Mike Conklin at $18.50 an hour as Health Director, and Lisa Kevins at $13.50 an hour as Assistant Director. She'll be doing some of the arts programming and science programming. We're actually adding something. So if that could be added to the motion, yes, please. Okay, so we have a second. Any other questions?
We don't have a second.
Oh, we don't?
Second.
I'm sorry. Threw that in. Okay, now, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the budget modification request as per the Village Treasurers memo dated May 27, May 2022.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the revised Village of Warwick Summer Concert Series schedule that includes the addition of concerts on July 13, 2022, and August 26, 2022, per the attached calendar provided by Summer Concert Coordinator Bill Iorato, William Iorato.
Okay. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Um, I want to talk a little bit about the concert locations. So, you know, I, I recognize that the concerts have historically been held on Railroad Green, and during COVID, the concerts were moved to Stanley Demming. And I think that Stanley Demming sort of demonstrated a much more accessible setting. I under, I also understand that there's a lot of reasons that we like having the concerts at Railroad Green. There's, you know, the, the people that attend, they have better access to restaurants. Maybe they're going to go afterwards. And also, I think that, you know, the, these are community events, and I think that Railroad Green is, can be really difficult for a lot of people to actually attend. I mean, it's very space limited. Parents with children that may have various sensory difficulties or may need space, or may, you know, may have other behavioral needs, you know, they're not really able to, to access that space. Whereas, you know, the, the Stanley Demming is much larger area. It can accommodate people sitting close together, people far apart, kids playing along the perimeter, you know, from a safety perspective. And so I would just like to talk about the potential opportunity to at least have some concerts at Stanley Demming.
My thought, though, too, was maybe other types of concerts, whether they be dance or, you know, something other than the standard kind of fair. The one thing that is problematic with Stanley Demming is the distance a person has to walk to get to the site. And that, it creates definitely challenges for seniors and for people with handicaps because it's not an easy terrain. And so that's, you know, just one of the things that we have to recognize and we have to work towards. But I think, you know, it, it definitely should be used because it's wonderful. It proved to be wonderful having bathroom facilities and having a playground facility was, you know, just really great during that season last year. I think it's a conversation somewhat with Bill Iorato, but also maybe to the arts community to say, so we have this, we have this great venue. Can we talk about, you know, doing other
this great venue. Can we talk about, you know, doing other types of performances, maybe in the fall, um, that would, and I, I did actually mention it to Apple Fest, to look at that area as, you know, as a stage and that they could use it in a interesting way, possibly.
So, it sounds like there's, you know, there's both, both venues have inclusivity and accessibility.
Issues, yeah.
Issues and also benefits, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I think that's an argument for splitting the summer concert series, you know, that there are, there are things that you, you know, there are different folks that can be accommodated at, at both.
I think that Bill has, um, you know, planned this season because of the overwhelming response he got for people to have it back. And in, in essence, I can understand that. It was like, we want it back because it represents normalcy. It represents, okay, we are post-COVID, we're coming out of this, and this is how we did it before. So, I, I get it, I get it. But the great thing is that we've discovered this other venue. And, um, so, I think we can work with Bill and maybe have that conversation that maybe things can be changed. He was also concerned about people not knowing where to go, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, is it there or is it there? You know, is it, so, um...
You can hear them.
And they're not too far away from each other.
They're not that far from each other.
No, they're not, they're not that far.
Yeah, so I, I think, um, it seems like this year's, the schedule is set. It's been advertised as such.
Mm-hmm.
So, if any changes, I would think next year might be more appropriate, and then it could be advertised from the outset, that it will be in, will be taking advantage of a second location that's maybe a bit larger.
You know, like I was thinking to go to the community center, and maybe this fall, have like a, um, Battle of the Bands, you know, really more of a youth, a youth concert that would be, you know, draw a whole different, different type of, you know, audience. Because that is not covered in any of that, you know? Um, so, I, I think, yes, that's, that's set, that's fine. But I think that, um, like I said, reaching out to the arts community, reaching out to the community center, maybe we can find, you know, some venues that could happen. Because I'd hate to, to not have anything happen there this year. I think it would be such a waste, and, and it really was so successful. And it, and it, and it also put a focus on that end of the park, and I don't want to lose that focus, uh, because it's, you know, that's the next step of development, developing the park.
Especially with the art read them right there as well.
Yeah. I'd also challenge, like, you know, you tend to get feedback, like, you know, people don't always come forward when they're super excited about something, you know, that's happening, that's working. And, you know, if, I, I, I think, like, maybe before making the decision to do it one hundred percent at Railroad Green, when we had had a number of concerts at, um, Stanley Demming prior, like, maybe folks should have been asked, right? Like, because, just because you have feedback from some particular folks that know that they can reach out to the village or whoever to, to, to let their voices be heard, you know, that doesn't mean that that's overwhelmingly what everyone thinks.
There may have been also, um, a conversation with the artist, and that may have been, may have colored it as well.
Okay.
So, I think, uh, you know, it's important, I think that, um, you should reach out to Bill and just have that conversation with him. Um, and I will reach out to some of the other organizations that might, uh, you know, might bring, be able to bring something to it. That could be scheduled for late summer or for fall, or something in between, you know?
Okay.
I know that Historical Society is doing a great job with performances and activation in the park.
At Lewis Park, yeah.
And so, that would have to be taken into consideration, too, so not to overlap.
Were there any issues in terms of, um, the sound quality at Stanley Demming?
As long as there was sound, a sound person.
Okay.
Yeah, it really did need, you, there was a need.
Because I know it could be a lot more people in a larger space, kind of spaced out, so.
Well, luckily, that amphitheater really worked well in terms of, you know, projecting the sound, but you do need a system and, uh...
One of the bands last year went out and bought all new sound equipment for Stanley Demming.
Are they, are they performing this year there?
Is it gifted to the village?
No, no, using the other fifty, forty concerts they do every year.
Yeah.
Okay, and so this, so that, that's actually helpful for me because you said, reach out to Bill Iorato, so he, um, not only sort of runs the concert series, but makes the decisions about, okay, thank you.
And, and also, the understanding, I, I don't think we can really just shift gears at this point. It's been advertised in the, as, as Tom says. But to kind of make him see it in a, a different light, and as you were talking, I think that's very persuasive.
Should, should that discussion wait until the season's over and, uh, it's, it becomes a, A, a debriefing, and B, these are the, these are the parameters we want to, you know, start discussing, uh, for next year?
Yeah, we could do that, do it that way. That might be a little bit kinder, gentler, and more, it would happen.
But I think still, you know, if we're reaching out.
I'm going to still reach out to the...
Other opportunities for concerts at either Stanley Demming or Railroad Green that, that aren't part of this particular series.
Right.
Would enhance what we're offering to the, to the residents.
You know, for example, uh, Melissa Patam has this wonderful arts, uh, academy or school, um, and for them to do, they, they can't do any performances there. They're at the former Georgia Pacific plant, so then they have to rent the Lyceum Theater, which is extremely expensive. And if they have a smaller venue, like some classes that just want to explore or experiment, wouldn't this be just great for them to use, so?
I'm also thinking that outreach should be done sooner rather than later because if all of these locations are Railroad Green and we wait till after this, maybe it won't be as fresh in people's minds of like, oh, there was better sound quality, or I could hear the performers more, or there's more things for my kids to do.
Mm-hmm.
Because last year, there were a little mix-up, or variety at least.
Yeah.
So, you're suggesting not necessarily the interaction with Bill Iorato, but to reach out to the public and get feedback?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that on Facebook.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can take a poll.
Yeah, I mean, but not limited to Facebook, though, but yeah, yeah.
It's a good start.
Yeah.
I mean, we advertise our events on Facebook, these particular events, so why not use a poll to...
If we're gonna do a poll, though, I'd rather, I'd like Mr. Iorato to...
Okay.
Be a part of it, yeah, yeah. Um, okay.
Okay.
That sounds good. And, you know, because what we can do is, I can create a, um, I can create like a little survey, just like the virtual suggestion box, and then that could be shared out via multiple different mechanisms. Facebook, we could put a, um, a tiny URL and put it in a letter to the editor.
The one thing that was pointed out to me by some of the performers was the stage was small. The stage was, it was a difficult in that size. And, I must say, we, we created that stage in a minute, you know, it was that fast to try to get things, uh, going for next, for last year. So, I don't think that should, you know, should hinder us, and I, and I do believe it's sort of the baby stage to hopefully maybe something more permanent and, and really nice, so. So, anyway, I think we have a second, right? Any, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And you're number six.
Oh, it's me. Um, motion to amend the Village of Warwick's schedule of fees to reduce the fee under the heading Parks, under the subheading Facility Use Permit Application Fee for Gatherings More Than Two Hundred People to the Following. Type of P, type of fee, Facility Use Permit Application Fee Gatherings More Than Two Hundred People Amounts Zero Dollars.
Second. Right, discussion?
Okay.
Again, I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that these larger, some of these larger application, or larger event applications for facility use, put a pretty significant burden on our office staff, um, in, in terms of gathering the information and, and getting things in. Um, so, you know, i- it's a concern of mine. Um, I think that, you know, I mean, Corey, you might be able to speak to it because you were actively engaged in the discussions and the development of, uh, of the, uh, law that was passed. But that, that's, that's my concern.
It's a concern of mine, too. I also just had a question about, would the code still say that the board has, there, it's up to the board's discretion ultimately any application that comes before it in terms of what we can charge or not charge? Um, because I know that that was one thing that we had listed at the bottom of each application or, you know, the checkpoints of, um, you know, that ultimately we, we could have that authority to make decisions, um...
But this motion would make it, would set that fee at zero, so there's no need for any discretion.
Right, but...
Because we're not charging anyone anything for the fee application.
But I think what Corey's saying is that, well, maybe we shouldn't go down this path and that because it says that on the application, then we have the capability of reducing the fee to zero.
So, like, as it stands now, two fifty, but we have discretion to say, you know, we could waive this fee, but...
But didn't our attorney kind of give a cautious tone to the ability to do that and who we could do it for? Um, and isn't that represented in the next, um, motion relative to who we're allowed to?
Right.
To waive things for and...
That's security deposit.
But it's still...
No, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, we're, we're saying blanket, no fee. We're not dis, we're not showing any discretion relative to the fee. And, you know, it just seems like, well, tonight's example, for instance, because it's going to be the town PD, um, and, um, you know, there would still be the, right now, there would still be the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. Um, but if we pass the nu, motion number seven, um, they wouldn't have to provide the security deposit.
Right.
If the application was being provided by the, uh, community center or the coalition, well, then there's, based on what we heard from our attorney, there's no way we can waive, um, them, the requirement for them for the security deposit.
I'm just confused why motion six doesn't have any exemptions, but motion seven does for specific...
Well, but six is, six is, it lowers it for everybody to zero.
Yeah, but it doesn't call out certain ones. It's just zero.
It's everybody.
It wouldn't because everyone gets...
I understand that, but I'm saying, like, why are they so different? Why not just, you know?
Not require a security deposit?
Yeah, or...
At all?
Well, because one, um...
One is a permit, uh, uh, we, the thought was that the security deposit, um, you know, for especially a large event, um, gives a certain level of security, as what it's called, uh, to us as municipality, that there is, you know, if, you know, beyond insurance, it's, uh, belts and suspenders.
And the, the security deposit is being waived for other sort of governmental entities?
I just don't like the idea of exemptions. I think the code was revised to have everyone on equal playing field.
Mm-hmm.
And we had no good reason as to why certain ones were exempt and, and certain ones weren't. And we just felt like it was more fair.
In terms of the, uh, of number seven, you're, you're targeting?
Seven's the one I've, I've more of an issue with. Six, you know, I feel like if, like I said before, if one is exempt, all should be exempt and one's charged, all should be charged. But I could vote yes or yea for six, but I think it's a slippery slope on seven.
Well, I think our council defined it as municipal, uh, entities that have districts. And so, that's, you know, it was pretty clear.
Received money directly from taxpayers.
Right.
But the community center could, which is, for example, could have an event and just want to partner with one of these, or any organization that's not on the list could partner with one that's on this list to waive the security deposit. I mean...
If they're partnering, yeah, it's kind of like having a cosigner on your lease.
Yeah.
And if you partner with the village, like National Night Out, it cuts through all that.
I don't think so.
Because, because we're...
Because you thought we'd do a facility use. I mean, we're not, we're not going to provide their insurance for them.
We're for co-sponsor, I thought that's exactly what we're doing with the national...
What you're gonna do.
National Night Out.
Uh, no, they're going to, uh, they're going to have their own insurance. It wouldn't be under the village's insurance policy. Well, could we, uh, do one at a time?
Yeah.
How about that? Uh, so, number six. And, uh, the, so this is on the, the application fee for gatherings more than two hundred people. Less than two hundred people, there is no application fee. So, for more than two hundred people. So, that's very few events, actually.
Seven max, right?
At, at, yes.
And the reason that it was suggested as such is because we could add a fee back in in the future, you know, like, without having to go through major language changes.
We also talked about this at this table, that, you know, there's administrative headache involved with this. So, to me, that's placing a zero value, zero dollar value of all this extra work that DPW and/or Reyna or the clerks and Jen have to deal with. I mean, for these one or two events, maybe not all of all seven, but...
Right now, I mean, is, what is it, two hundred and fifty?
Uh, I'm not sure I, like, I could see how that could be a perspective. I don't, I don't share the perspective in the sense that this is basically saying in my mind that, you know, this is something that is already, it's, it's covered as a benefit of the village, you know, that is paid for by taxpayers already, just like using our roads, you know, or, uh, our parks in general. Like, that, that's what this says to me, is that this is covered, not that there's no, yeah, that use or value or impact, you know?
I think, I think administratively reviewing applications and collecting insurance and all that stuff is a, is a service the village is providing, for residents' benefit to use the facility. That's, that's kind of how I see it. It's not, I, I wouldn't attribute no value. I mean, we obviously value what our staff does, right? But there are some things when it comes to use of the village facilities in a way that we believe is going to benefit the residents, that there's a, yeah, there's a, there's some administrative overhead there. But that's, to me, I see that's all part of, you know, providing a viable service to the community.
You know, um, years ago, that would, I, that would have been a very, you know, what you're saying is true and very simple, straightforward. Somebody came in, they, they filled out an application, um, they got their insurance. It, it wasn't what it is today. You know, how thick is the fireman's carnival hole?
About two inches.
About two inches thick of, of administrative oversight from, and that we are required that, and, um, and the hard part is to work with the applicant to make sure that they do cross their Ts and dot their Is, because otherwise, it would, you know, it just wouldn't happen. So, insurance has gotten a lot more involved, um, especially, but there's just a lot more criteria for running an event these days. And I just want to point that out, Tom, and, and I understand what you say. I, I do believe it's part of the service that we offer, but the service has expanded to be days of work as opposed to an hour.
Is there, so, you know, maybe that is also another conversation... Is there, so, you know, maybe that is also another conversation though. It's like, is there opportunity to to curtail some of that effort? Because a two, two hundred and fifty dollar fee wouldn't even, it sounds like, scratch the surface of what that actually costs the village. So, you know, is there, if we don't want to raise the fee and then, you know, are there opportunities to reduce the load?
I don't know how you can. Uh, it is what, it is what it's become.
And that's because of insurance, the role of insurance, the village's insurance?
Well, what happens is that on these larger events, when they start involving mechanical rides, it opens, it's, it's like Pandora's box. I mean, it really becomes a much different animal. It's one thing to have a little health fair on Railroad Avenue, but to have amusement park stuff going on and bouncy houses and things of that nature becomes much more complex.
Does the village incur cost on our insurance when they have these events?
No, we're named additionally insured.
Yep, okay, that's what I thought.
So a business located outside the village, because I can't think of one inside the village, with two hundred and fifty employees wants to have a picnic. They come in here, we want to have bounce house, we want to do this, we want to do that, you know, this is going to be a pretty big deal, we'll take over the whole back of the park. Uh, we'd like to use the ball fields because we're going to play some softball. They're not even a village entity. And basically by reducing this to zero, we're footing the bill or the cost that we incur to process that application.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Maybe it should be, like, maybe there are other ways to slice this, you know? Maybe it should be free for village residents and-
Yeah, I thought it wa- it wasn't for for-profit businesses.
They're having a picnic.
As, as a business function. So in other words, you can't invite your clients to a big party, but if you wanted to do something with your employees, I would think that would, that would be allowed. There's no, there's no, the only, I believe the only exclusion, Corey, the only exclusion is if you're, if you're doing it for business purposes. So if you were, if you were going to go in there and hold Zumba classes in the pavilion and charge a fee to the individuals who were attending those classes, no.
We went round and round about that one a couple of years.
This also seems to me to point, like, the thing that keeps, we keep coming back to as a board is like these mechanical rides. And like the, the heavy, it's like, almost like once you engage a certain type of activity, it steps up the level of effort for the village. And, you know, because if a, if the school wants to have a picnic for two hundred and twelve students, should they, like, that does not, that's not going to impact the village and the paperwork, et cetera, the same extent that the fireman's car- carnival is. And I am, I think that they shouldn't have to pay for that, you know, like as a munis- and, and like my thoughts all along has been, have been this like municipal entity thing. I'm also all about not making village residents pay, you know, but maybe the conversation actually needs to be about this escalation of effort. And I know this was triggered by the need to, you know, the need to accommodate some of the feedback that we were getting from the fire department, but what keeps, it keeps coming back to is the level of effort associated with this escalation of activities.
Well, you talk about effort, but there's also liability.
Effort and liability.
And in the past, there have been rides that have damaged the fields, correct? Uh, moving out, and so it has happened.
Yeah, and have we looked at other-
And they've, you know, come back and remedied everything that was wrong, yeah.
Which is great, which is great that we can count on them to do that.
Right.
Every time? I hope so. Every organization, I hope so.
I, I think there's certain ones we can count on every time, certain ones who we maybe don't know well enough yet, is the whether we can count on them.
When, when you were working on this initially, um, and, um, if the answer is no, that's totally fine. I'm just curious. Did you all look at, like, other communities that have major carnivals?
We did. From my recollection, it was the town and the county. We looked at both applications and I'm pretty sure that the trustee Lindberg pulled in two other outs- not outside of the county, but they were two towns. And we really looked at this and we just felt like it is a slippery slope. If we revise the code tonight, there's going to be some other issue that comes up from Reyna's office with just facility use permits. So we just try to make it fair and for everyone.
But is it fair? It's not, though. Even if you have two hundred and fifty dollars, like blanket across the board, that's not actually fair because folks that have put, it's not, it's not fair and it's also not equitable. Because folks that are not getting any money for the work that, the things that they're doing, like they're not paying, you know, they're not making people pay to enter. They're also not putting the same level of burden on the village, would be paying the same amount as something that has escalated to the point that it's two inches thick. So that's, that to me is not fair.
What's fair to me is when the, when a private organization, a nonprofit like the Historical Society wants to rent one of our parks and they came to me complaining about this new application fee, I told them, everyone has to pay it. If you have, if you're over that limit, I'm sorry, you have a security deposit. It's to keep everything-
But, but maybe fairness is what, is what Carly is talking about, to make it more equitable, that there is an aside, that there is a fee for, you know, a, an event or a permit application fee for an event of more than two hundred people that includes mechanical rides. I mean, maybe as simply as that, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we know that mechanical rides are what make these packets so long? I mean, is it Apple Fest? What's?
Yes.
And that's, I think maybe-
Is it mechanical rides?
Yes, yes.
Well, maybe it's worth a conversation with the insurance company about what are the boxes that if checked, escalate our whole process. And then we could just include those boxes that are their criteria that tip us over into this space.
Reyna, having lived with it, can probably tell us that.
And then, and I, I mean, um-
But wasn't Reyna herself the one that felt that this application fee was needed? I mean, she's the person that sees this day in and day out, Jen too, I'm sure. So.
For those, particularly for those events that include mechanical rides, that, that are much larger. They're, you know, they, it's like the accordion file, they expand out, you know, and become much more serious and, and harder. And so I think you could differentiate. I, I mean, I would hate to have the, the school pay an application fee, you know, for a large picnic. That's not going to have, you know, the same effect or the, it will, it wouldn't have the administrative effect that something like a carnival or Apple Fest would have.
It could be something like facility use permit application fee, gatherings, more than two hundred people that meet one or more of the following criteria. And then the escalation criteria could be listed. And then there could be-
How, how many, I'm sorry, how many events are we talking about that have this mechanical rise? That, that seems to be the insurance trigger.
Right. I would say-
Two.
Two.
And from my pers- I mean, we're do- we've got a known universe here. Apple Fest is, you know, my personal feelings as a fact for it, I think it does good things and brings a lot of people in. And the fireman's carnival, I, I think it's just become a community staple every summer. I think it's great. So we're really only talking about two, we know to anticipate this. The insurance requirements don't change necessarily year after year. It's not like we're rediscovering this process. Sure, there might be, there might be some modifications to what insurance requires, but if a lot of it's the same, it would kind of build those, those, those muscles, so to speak, year after year. I mean, I, again, I'm not discounting what any of our great staff do here. That's not the point of this. But there's really only two that require mechanical rides. That's what this is about. And so I, I mean, and I, and I, back to what you said before about whatever company that wants to have a company picnic, I, I would argue that is doing business. Right? Them working with their employees, building morale, whatever, that's doing business to further their bottom line, in a sense, right? So I don't, I don't know if that would pass regardless. So again, my, my thought is by removing the, the application fee, I mean, so we're really only talking about two administratively burdensome events. And we know what they are. And year after year, the requirements are pretty much, I, pretty much the same.
Well, I question that because laws change, insurance companies review laws, review, um, lawsuits and the disposition of those lawsuits. So there, there is that component to it that has to be coordinated through Reyna and Jen. And I think that it's also incumbent upon us to, you know, ma- make sure we're, we're, that Reyna is able to, to follow through on those things. Plus, it seems like they spend a lot of time chasing down the documentation that they need. In other words, it's not like somebody comes in with a two-inch-high packet that's totally complete. No, this is missing. No, this is missing. And then, okay, we'll get it to you next week. Next week comes, uh, excuse me, um, we didn't get what you said you were going to give us. You know, that's the whole time thing. And then once you get it, you're back and forth with the insurance company and with our insurance company to say, is this satisfactory? Is it not satisfactory?
All, all, all valid points to, to fix the incomplete application. If it's not there, take it back and bring it when it's ready. Is, is one thing.
Yeah, that does happen a lot. So, already.
And I think-
But also then what happens is there's timelines. And it's, you know, suddenly, okay, we have a week and the carnival is going to happen or whatever. And so there, you know, there just is a lot of pressure. Then, then it gets to be, so it, it's, it's not been done correctly, it's not been done correctly, but then there's a timeline. And of course, our staff is trying to help. And so then they jump in and just say, okay, this is what you need and et cetera. So.
So I feel like what we're discussing is not actually the root cause issue. Like, you know, we had a two hundred and fifty dollar fee to, it sounds like to recognize the labor that our, the village hall has to put in for these significant events, which then is a burden, I think, on residents, the schools and others. But it's recog- what it is, is it's recognizing their labor, but it's not actually addressing the root thing that we keep talking about, which is that it's a, it's an inefficient process that is really heavily impacting the staff. And it's also, it sounds like it's a contentious process at times. And that seems like that's what we should be figuring out how to address. And not make this be about that.
But that's what the whole app, you know, the application fee, you know, facilities use application fee was about. It was really to create more order because before that, there was less, much less. And I think it, it, it does work. And I think, but it's still, there is just a, a heavy amount of administrative things to check off, so.
The other thing is, we're not changing the code. This is the fee schedule on the permit. This could be changed in the future.
I think you also have to account for the initial shock that some of these orgi- organizations are having. Because this is the first time they're seeing it since it's been revised, so.
Right, right.
There's also that. But we've heard from trustee Lindberg that it's not that many people within his organization that kind of came forward that we did our due diligence. And I'm defending it because we really took a lot in, under consideration. And we didn't want to make it punitive. We, we, the intent was to make it fair. And we weren't all on the same page at first, but we got there and we felt like this was the-
Well, is, is, is number six, though, fair if everyone's treated the same in terms of no application, the way it's written right now?
I was planning-
Maybe not fair administratively?
No, yeah, like I said earlier, like if one is, is exempt, one, all should be exempt. So, you know, this, I just, you know, for these larger packets, I do still have that concern of, you know, what the clerk's office is having to go through with.
So Reyna's comment to me was, it doesn't matter what the application fee is, it's not going to change the culture of how these applications are brought to her desk. You know, that they are not going to be complete, that she is going, you know, that the whole thing is, you know, just because you, you, you've paid two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't improve the way-
That's what I'm saying. That's, yeah.
It doesn't improve the way it, it comes down, so.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second.
Right. Should we just-
Go on around.
Take a vote and see where-
And we're voting just on six and then we'll move into seven.
On six, seven.
And by the way-
And the night is young.
Should this come up again? It can be, again, it's, we're not changing the code. It's not being sent up to Albany. It's-
Right, it's the fees, yeah.
Should I roll call or make it clear? Yeah, I think so. Trustee Chaney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
Yes.
Trustee McNight?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Oh boy, I'd love to say no, but yes. No, just to be adverse.
Okay. Motion to amend the Village of Warwick's schedule of fees under the heading Parks, under the subheading Facility Use Permit Security Deposit for Gatherings More Than Two Hundred People and Facility Use Permit Security Deposit for Gatherings Less Than Two Hundred People, that the following entities are exempt: Warwick Valley Central School District, Warwick Fire Department, Warwick Fire District, Warwick Police Department, Warwick Community Ambulance Service and Albert Wisner Public Library. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Then discussion.
Discussion, let's, let's go.
And we talked about liability and amusement park rides or rides, um, you know, you know, the fire district, fire departments are, are listed under here. So does that have a bearing on this? Because that application includes those specific things and-
When we talked to Steve about this, he had mentioned that there, that liability language doesn't change. It's just that the security deposit, because there's language in there that requires that they-
That they have insurance and that we're named, yeah. I mean, that, in, in essence, that doesn't change the coverage of an event.
Or what they're responsible for.
Or what they're responsible for.
And I, I know one of the things that we had talked about last time was the concern over the school district. And, you know, them providing a deposit every single time. Was there any further discussion, like at village hall, about whether or not there could be, like, a rolling deposit?
We did talk to the treasurer about that and she was, she didn't feel that it was appropriate or that fiscally that should, that's the way it should be handled. And that a check can't have a life, you know, over a year. So it, it does present some problems.
And is the check just held, it's not deposited? It's sort of destroyed if there's no damage?
Returned.
It's sent back. Was there any conversation with the school district on it?
I don't think directly with the school district. I think it was really more about, was this something that the treasurer's office should advocate?
Was the treasurer's office concerned about having it carry over beyond the, the twelve, a twelve-month period? So in essence, to what Carly's suggesting,
Every year.
You, you know, this, the school district could give us, um, a cer- a, a, a check for that amount and it just stays on account and it's supplied to each one. It exists to support any event that they would have.
And then it's returned at the end of the year and then they give it?
At the end of the year, yeah.
What is the facilities use security deposit at for gatherings over time?
Over two hundred's five hundred dollars, I believe. I don't know what under two hundred is. Over two hundred, it's $500, I believe. I don't know what under 200 is.
I think, is it 250?
Or 250, I think.
It's 200.
And the application fee is 250. So, under 200, application fee-
We're, we're in the ballpark. I mean, it isn't an economic impact on the organizations. It's just money that's being held that they can't access. And what I'll say is, the organizations that we're talking about exempting are, you know, have always been right there to, you know, make sure that any problems that occurred were corrected. And, and done in a, a, a very reasonable time. And, you know, there are other organizations who aren't taxpayer-funded that, um, basically don't damage the village property and leave a mess, who provide important community services, and yet, they're gonna be required to, you know, put, put up the money. So, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of feeling that, you know, you treat everybody the same.
Yeah, I mean, based on this conversa- the conversation that we had prior, you know, I'd be okay with that, too.
What, so specifically, what does that mean?
That we would, I think Barry's proposing that we deny.
I'm, I'm suggesting that I'm probably not gonna vote in favor of this because, it's, it's something that, you know, it's not an economic impact on these organizations. We can figure out ways to make it, uh, work relative to not having to come in with a check for every event and then having that return. So, it, it, it just doesn't seem to me to be, uh, you know, something to, to really-
Yeah, I suppose these organizations could come and request one-off, an exception.
Well, and waiving the security deposit, I don't think is the same as a gift, right? Because they're still eligible for the, it's not being deposited. And they're still, I mean, I'm not Steve Gabba, so, but just based on my interpretation of what he said last time. It, it's not being deposited, and they'd still be liable for damage if they created damage, even without a security deposit.
That's right.
So, we could waive on a case-by-case basis as necessary here more easily than the fees. Because the fees would amount to a gift. But Steve may have a different-
Uh, so what was the fees early, uh, prior to the new, uh, schedule?
My recollection is the security deposit was a couple hun- 100?
100.
100.
For under 200? For under 200.
But we didn't have a differentiation before-
Oh, that's true.
The new law was enacted. So, it was only 100, security deposit, yeah.
And considering, um, that all of these, e- everybody has, um, insurance in the game to be in any place in the village, to have an activity, an event. Maybe, uh, we do, we go back to that and just have a blanket, $100, and, um, and call it a day. And, and instead of pointing out one or the other, I mean, that seems more doable for everybody. I'm, I'm not gonna be presumptuous to say that they can, they can afford $500. I don't know. I don't know what their coffers are, and, um, but at the same time, I wanna be, you know, I, I think an even playing field is appropriate.
My only comment on that is $100 doesn't fix much if we have to do it.
But their insurance would do it. That would be-
It's gonna cost us more to get to their insurance with attorney fees than-
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know if it, if, I mean, it seems pretty, we've had issues like this, and the insurance provider turns around and fixes it, you know, or it gets done without calling Steve Gabba or somebody. I mean, maybe 100 is too low, but I think 500 is, is quite high. And if, if it's to go across the board to, you know, these entities plus, you know, our, our groups, our clubs, our smaller organizations, our churches, um, I think 500 is a lot.
Yeah, so I, I see this a bit differently, right? I, I'm looking at who's exempt, those providing municipal services that have a, a district overlay with the village. As we kind of discussed last time. And for, for each of these, just getting, uh, I, I don't think $500 is necessarily a problem, but it's, it creates another barrier. And it makes it more challenging to work with the villagers, and you gotta get someone else involved in that organization to write a check. And then, if it's not cashed, it's, from an accounting perspective, it's a liability. It's kind of standing out there, and they have to account for it somehow. It just, it just creates more work and headache for everyone, especially when the, these very few, I guess, this small handful of events that do happen. We know from experience that they've done the right thing. They've cleaned up, they've, they've made amends, right? Because if not, I think someone said it last time, then maybe they don't do it the next year, right, if they, if they trash the place. So, we, I, I don't see it as much as how much money should be put down as a security deposit that, assuming you get it back. It's just, it just creates more, more barriers. Which I don't think these municipal organizations really need to deal with, and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm grateful that they want to have these events in the village and bring people to the village. That's my perspective. So, I, I, I would vote in favor of how it's written.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still in favor of the municipal services not having, but I'm, I don't feel super strongly, you know?
And according to Steve, those are the only ones we were able to exempt.
That's right.
So, if somebody comes in with an application that isn't one of these, there's no opportunity for us to exempt them regardless of their history, right?
Well, no, they're, I mean, on the form, doesn't, I mean, they could, they could request a reduction.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is different than the fee personally, because the security deposit is not, it's not a gift. Because it's not being deposited. And they would still be liable for the damages, even if they don't give us a deposit. But I don't know if Steve would agree with that.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I agree with the municipal, um, allowance. But I think, on the other end, $500 for some, some of these organizations is high. Not these, but other organizations. And I would rather that be reduced to 250. So, in the schedule of fees, what I'm proposing, that it would be for gatherings of more than 200 people, there would be a, a security deposit of 250, and then the, these civic organizations are exempt.
So, that would be two motions, then?
Right.
We can only deal with one at a time.
I don't know how many more weeks we can discuss these things.
I know, I know.
Are we ready to vote on this motion? Do we need more discussion on number seven? I'm ready.
Okay. I think do a roll call again, just makes it clear.
Trustee Chaney?
No.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachman?
No.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
This is our first, like, disagreement.
We'll write that down.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, as this, this body, you know?
I'm gonna get a call from Bill Lindberg tonight. So, what do you, just as a point of discussion, what do you think about a reduction of the $500 to 250? Is that within the realm of reason, or is that? Again, it's, they're, they're covered by insurance. I mean, it, it, so it's an amount of money that-
It was deductible, right? Probably not 250 bucks.
Right.
Well, a- again, if, if, if we have to be the ones to initiate obtaining money from their insurance, it's gonna cost us money. I, I think what, I don't, I don't think we've ever experienced having to do that. The organizations themselves, like, the, the situation with the carnival the one year where there was significant damage to, with tire rutting because they were towing equipment and RVs out of there with tow trucks. That was handled by the insurance company for the carnival operator. So, you know, we, we never, we didn't have to lift a finger because the fire department did what was expected of it. They made sure that, uh, the entity that caused the damages corrected the damages. And that, that entity had to go to their insurance company to do that.
I was, I'm listening to Tom talking about barriers, and money can be a barrier. And so, that's why I present that.
Is it something that we should, like, check in on?
I, yeah.
With organizations before, like, doing a motion?
Yeah.
Um, because the organizations that would have more than 200 people, like, that's probably not usually gonna be like your average resident.
No, but something like the health fair, like the UAME church, you know? I, I'm, I know for a fact that they don't have big coffers.
Yeah.
And they're gonna attract, and they're performing a service. It's a health fair for the community. Uh, things that the historical society does, you know, that attract many people. Again, you know, it's, they're not, you know, wealthy. They're, they're, they're trying to keep all their buildings intact, you know?
And yet, they pay the fee.
And yet, they pay-
Pay the security deposit.
Right. And that's why I, I offer a reduction idea. I mean, they'll get it back, of course. Okay, so we'll-
If that's gonna get pursued, I would think that, uh, it has, it should be discussed with the attorney and-
Absolutely.
Use his assistance to help draft the proper motion.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
So, should I move on to the next motion?
Yes.
All right. Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park to hold their annual carnival per their letter dated April 18th, 2022, set up to begin on Sunday, June 19th, 2022, and breakdown will be completed by Sunday, June 26th, 2022. The carnival will be open to the public from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Wednesday, June 2020, June 22, oh my goodness, 22, 2022, through Friday, June 24th, 2022, and from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Saturday, June 25th, 2022. Fireworks are scheduled for Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022. Request includes use of alcohol in the park, completed park permit, and proper insurance, including host liquor liability, has been received.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park for a fireman's field day event from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, August 21st, 2022. Request includes use of alcohol in the park, completed park permit and proper insurance, including proof of coverage for firematic events and contests, and host liquor liability has been received.
Second.
Any thoughts? Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Boy Scout Troop 45 to use the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for an awards ceremony and end-of-the-year event on Monday, June 13th, 22, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Request includes use of restrooms, electricity, and pavilion lights. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have two addendums? Yeah.
Motion to grant permission to OC Bombers to use ground field in Veterans Memorial Park for a game on Sunday, June 19th, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and for practices from Monday, June 20th, 2022, through Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, 2022. All events must be in coordination with the other activities taking place in the park, such as Warwick Little League, Warwick Youth Football, Highlander Rugby, Warwick Adult Kickball League, and Warwick Lascals. Completed park permit, proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Barrett, do you wanna do the last?
Motion to hire Ryan Richards to the position of seasonal Department of Public Works laborer at a salary of $18 per hour at 40 hours per week for no more than 12 weeks, with a start date of May 23rd, 2022, per the recommendation of DPW supervisor Mike Moser.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it. Final comments from the board? Does anybody have any comments they wanna make?
Um, I, I do. Very brief, though.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. Um, so we did have an excellent listening session at Memorial Park, Sunday before last. And I won't go through all the feedback, just in the interest of time, but I would like to report out on the feedback that we have. So, um, is the best way to do that, to kind of like draft something up and then it can go on the website?
That would be great, or send it out to the trustees so that they get a sense of what's, you know, happening.
Yep.
So, yeah, both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For residents' benefit to use the facility. That's, that's kind of how I see it. It's not, I, I wouldn't attribute no value. I mean, we obviously value what our staff does, right? But there are some things, when it comes to use of the village facilities in a way that we believe is gonna benefit the residents, that there's a, yeah, there's a, there's some administrative overhead there. But that's, to me, I see that's all part of, you know, providing a viable service to the community.
You know, years ago, that would, I, that would've been a very, you know, what you're saying is true and very simple, straightforward. Somebody came in, they, they filled out an application. They got their insurance, and it wasn't what it is today. You know, how thick is the fireman's carnival?
About two inches.
About two inches thick of, of administrative oversight from, and that we are required. And, um, and the hard part is to work with the applicant to make sure that they do cross their Ts and dot their Is. Because otherwise, it would, you know, it just wouldn't happen. So, insurance has gotten a lot more involved, um, especially, but there's just a lot more criteria for running an event these days. And I just wanna point that out, Tom, and, and I understand what you say. I, I do believe it's part of the service that we offer. But the service has expanded to be days of work as opposed to an hour.
Is there, so, you know, maybe that is also another conversation, though. It's like, is there opportunity to to curtail some of that effort? Because a $200, $250 fee wouldn't even, it sounds like, scratch the surface of what that actually costs the village. So, you know, is there, if we don't wanna raise the fee, and then, you know, are there opportunities to reduce the load?
I don't know how you can. Uh, it is what it is, what it's become.
And that's because of insurance, the role of insurance, the village's insurance?
Well, what happens is that on these larger events, when they start involving mechanical rides, it opens, it's, it's like Pandora's box. I mean, it really becomes a much different animal. It's one thing to have a little health fair on Railroad Avenue, but to have amusement park stuff going on and bouncy houses and things of that nature, it becomes much more complex.
Does the village incur cost on our insurance when they have these events?
No, we're named additionally insured.
Yep, okay, that's what I thought.
So, a business located- So, a business located outside the village, cause I can't think of one inside the village, with two hundred and fifty employees wants to have a picnic. They come in here, we wanna have bounce house, we wanna do this, we wanna do that, you know, this is gonna be a pretty big deal, we'll take over the whole back of the park. Uh, we'd like to use the ball fields cause we're gonna play some softball. They're not even a village entity. And basically by reducing this to zero, we're footing the bill or the cost that we incur to process that application.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good point. Maybe it should be, like, maybe there are other ways to slice this, you know? Maybe it should be free for village residents and.
Yeah, I thought it wa- it wasn't for for-profit businesses.
They're having a picnic.
As, as a business function. So, in other words, you can't invite your clients to a big party. But if you wanted to do something with your employees, I would think that would, that would be allowed. There's no, there's no, the only, I believe the only exclusion.
But what, what did that be?
The only exclusion is if you're, if you're doing it for business purposes. So, if you were, if you were gonna go in there and hold Zumba classes in the pavilion and charge a fee to the individuals who were attending those classes, no.
We went round and round about that one couple of years.
This also seems to me to point, like, the thing that keeps, we keep coming back to as a board is like these mechanical rides. And like the, the heavy, it's like, almost like once you engage a certain type of activity, it steps up the level of effort for the village. And, you know, cause if a, if the school wants to have a picnic for two hundred and twelve students, should they, like, that does not, that's not gonna impact the village and the paperwork, et cetera, the same extent that the fireman's car- carnival is. And I am, I think that they shouldn't have to pay for that, you know, like as a munis- and, and like my thoughts all along has been, have been this like municipal entity thing. I'm also all about not making village residents pay, you know, but maybe the conversation actually needs to be about this escalation of effort. And I know this was triggered by the need to, um, you know, the need to accommodate some of the feedback that we were getting from the fire department. But what keeps, it keeps coming back to is the level of effort associated with this escalation of activities.
Well, you talk about effort, but there's also liability.
Effort and liability.
And in the past, there have been rides that have damaged the fields, correct? Uh, moving out.
Yeah.
So it, it has happened.
Yeah. And have we looked at other?
And they've, you know, come back and.
They've restored it.
Remedy everything that was wrong, yeah.
Which is great that we can count on them to do that.
Right.
Every time? I hope so.
I, I think there's certain ones we can count on every time, certain ones who we maybe don't know well enough yet as to whether we can count on them.
When, when you were working on this initially, um, and, um, if the answer is no, that's totally fine. I'm just curious. Did you all look at like other communities that have major carnivals?
We did. From my recollection, it was the town and the county. We looked at both applications and I'm pretty sure that the trustee Lindberg pulled in two other outs- not outside of the county, but they were two towns. And we really looked at this and we just felt like it is a slippery slope. If we revise the code tonight, there's going to be some other issue that comes up from Reina's office with just facility use permits. So, we just try to make it fair and for everyone.
But is it fair? It's not, though. Even if you have two hundred and fifty dollars, like blanket across the board, that's not actually fair. Because folks that have put, it's not, it's not fair and it's also not equitable. Because folks that are not getting any money for the work, that, the things that they're doing, like they're not paying, you know, they're not making people pay to enter. They're also not putting the same level of burden on the village, would be paying the same amount as something that has escalated to the point that it's two inches thick. So that's, that to me is not fair.
What's fair to me is when the, when a private organization, nonprofit like the Historical Society, wants to rent one of our parks and they came to me complaining about this new application fee. I told them, everyone has to pay it. If you have, if you're over that limit, I'm sorry, you have a security deposit. It's to keep everything.
But, but maybe the fairness is what, is what Carly is talking about, to make it more equitable, that there is an aside, that there is a fee. For, you know, a, an event or a permit application fee for an event of more than two hundred people that includes mechanical rides. I mean, maybe as simply as that, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we know that mechanical rides are what make these packets so long? I mean, is it Apple Fest? What's?
Yes.
And that's, I think maybe.
Is it mechanical rides?
Yes, yes.
Well, maybe it's worth a conversation with the insurance company about what are the boxes that if checked escalate our whole process? And then we could just include those boxes that are their criteria that tip us over into this space.
Reina, having lived with it, can probably tell us that.
And then, and I, I mean, um.
But wasn't Reina herself the one that felt that this application fee was needed? I mean, she's the person that sees this, Deanna, De- Jen too, I'm sure. So.
For those, particularly for those events that include mechanical rides, that, that are much larger, they're, you know, they, it's like the accordion file. They expand out, you know, and become much more serious and, and harder. And so I think you could differentiate. I, I mean, I would hate to have the, the school pay an application fee, um, you know, for a large picnic. That's not gonna have, you know, the same effect or the, it will, it wouldn't have the administrative effect that something like a carnival or Apple Fest would have.
It could be something like facility use permit application fee gatherings, more than two hundred people that meet one or more of the following criteria. And then the escalation criteria could be listed. And then there could be.
How, how many, I'm sorry, how many events are we talking about that have this mechanical rise? That, that seems to be the insurance trigger.
Right.
Right?
I would say.
Two.
Two.
And from my pers- I mean, we're do- we've got a known universe here. Apple Fest is, you know, my personal feelings is, I think it does good things and brings a lot of people in. And the fireman's carnival, I, I think it's just become a community staple every summer. I think it's great. So we're really only talking about two. We know to anticipate this. The insurance requirements don't change necessarily year after year. It's not like we're rediscovering this process. Sure, there might be, there might be some modifications to what insurance requires. But if a lot of it's the same, it'll kind of build those, those, those muscles, so to speak, year after year. I mean, I, again, I'm not discounting what any of our great staff do here. That's not the point of this. But there's really only two that require mechanical rides. That's what this is about. And so I, I mean, and I, and I, back to what you said before about whatever company that wants to have a company picnic. I, I would argue that is doing business, right? Them working with their employees, building morale, whatever. That's doing business to further their bottom line, in a sense, right? So I don't, I don't know if that would pass, um, regardless. So, again, my, my thought is by removing the, the application fee, I mean, so we're really only talking about two administratively burdensome events. And we know what they are, and year after year, the requirements are pretty much, I, pretty much the same.
Well, I question that because laws change, insurance companies review laws, review, um, lawsuits and the disposition of those lawsuits. So, there, there is, um, that component to it that has to be coordinated through Reina and Jen. And I think that it's also incumbent upon us to, you know, ma- make sure we're, we're, that Reina is able to, to follow through on those things. Plus, it seems like they spend a lot of time chasing down the documentation that they need. In other words, it's not like somebody comes in with a two-inch-high packet that's totally complete. No, this is missing. No, this is missing. And then, okay, we'll get it to you next week. Next week comes, uh, excuse me, um, we didn't get what you said you were gonna give us. You know, that's the whole time thing. And then once you get it, you're back and forth with the insurance company. And with our insurance company to say, is this satisfactory? Is it not satisfactory?
All, all, all valid points to, to fix the incomplete application. If it's not there, take it back and bring it when it's ready, is, is one thing.
That, that does happen a lot, so, already.
And I think.
But also then what happens is there's timelines and it's, you know, suddenly, okay, we have a week and the carnival is gonna happen or whatever. And so there, you know, there just is a lot of pressure. Then, then it gets to be, so it, it's, it's not been done correctly. It's not been done correctly. But then there's a timeline and of course our staff is trying to help. And so then they jump in and just say, okay, this is what you need and et cetera, so.
So I feel like what we're discussing is not actually the root cause issue. Like, you know, we had a two hundred and fifty dollar fee to, it sounds like, to recognize the labor that our, the village hall has to put in for these significant events, which then is a burden, I think, on residents, the schools and others. But it's recog- what it is, is it's recognizing their labor, but it's not actually addressing the root thing that we keep talking about, which is that it's a, it's an inefficient process that is really heavily impacting the staff. And it's also, it sounds like it's a contentious process at times. And that seems like that's what we should be figuring out how to address. And not make this be about that.
But, but that's what the whole app, uh, you know, the application fee, you know, facilities use application fee was about. It was really to create more order because before that there was less, much less. And I think it, it, it does work. Um, and I think, but it's still, there is just a, a heavy amount of administrative things to check off, so.
The other thing is, we're not changing the code. This is the fee schedule.
Right.
On the permit. This could be changed in the future.
I think you also have to account for the initial shock that some of these orgi- organizations are having. Because this is the first time they're seeing it since it's been revised, so.
Right.
There's also that. But we've heard from trustee Lindberg that it's not that many people within his organization that kind of came forward that we did our due diligence. And I'm defending it because we really took a lot in, under consideration. And we didn't wanna make it punitive. We, we, the intent was to make it fair. And we weren't all on the same page at first, but we got there and we felt like this was the.
Well, is, is, is number six, though, fair if everyone's treated the same in terms of no application, the way it's written right now?
I was planning.
Maybe not fair administratively?
No, yeah, like I said earlier, like if one is, is exempt, one, all should be exempt. So, you know, this, I just, you know, for these larger packets, I do still have that concern of, you know, what the clerk's office is having to go through with him.
So, uh, Reina's comment to me was, it doesn't matter what the application fee is, it's not gonna change the culture of how these applications are brought to her desk. You know, that they are not going to be complete, that she is going, you know, that the whole thing is, you know, it, just because you, you, you've paid two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't improve the way.
That's what I'm saying. That's, yeah.
It doesn't improve the way it, it comes down, so.
Well, we have a motion. We have a second.
Right. Should we just?
Go on around.
Take a vote and see where.
And we're voting just on six and then we'll move into seven.
Seven.
And by the way.
And the night is young.
Should this come up again? It can be, it's, we're not changing the code. It's not.
Right.
Being sent up to Albany. It's.
Right. It's the, um, fees, yeah.
Should I roll call or make it clear? Yeah, I think so. Trustee Chaney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
Yes.
Trustee McNeigh?
Yes.
Mary?
Oh boy, I'd love to say no, but yes. No, just to be adverse.
Okay. Motion to amend the Village of Warwick's schedule of fees under the heading Parks, under the subheading Facility Use Permit Security Deposit for gatherings more than two hundred people, and Facility Use Permit Security Deposit for gatherings less than two hundred people. That the following entities are exempt: Warwick Valley Central School District, Warwick Fire Department, Warwick Fire District, Warwick Police Department, Warwick Community Ambulance Service and Albert Wisner Public Library. Have a second?
Have a second.
Okay.
Then discussion.
Discussion. Let's, let's go.
And we talked about liability and amusement park rides or rides, um, you know, you know, the fire district, fire departments are, are listed under here. So, does that have a bearing on this? Because that application includes those specific things and?
When we talked to Steve about this, he had mentioned that there, that liability language doesn't change. It's just that the security deposit. Cause there's language in there that requires that they.
That they have insurance and that we're named, yeah. I mean, that, in, in essence, that doesn't change the coverage of an event.
Or what they're responsible for.
Or what they're responsible for.
And I, I know one of the things that we had talked about last time was the concern over the school district. And, you know, them providing a deposit every single time. Was there any further discussion, like at village hall, about whether or not there could be like a rolling deposit?
We did talk to the, the treasurer about that and she was, she didn't feel that it was appropriate or that fiscally that should, that's the way it should be handled. And that a check can't have a life, you know, over a year. So, it, it does present some problems.
And is the check just held? It's not deposited? It's sort of destroyed if there's no damage?
Returned.
Send back. Was there any conversation with the school district on it?
I don't think directly with the school district. I think it was really more about, was this something that the treasurer's office should, you know, advocate?
Was the treasurer's office concerned about having it carry over beyond the, the twelve, a twelve-month period? So, in essence, to what Carly's suggesting.
A year.
You, you know, this, the school district could give us, um, a, uh, cer- a, a, a check for that amount? And it just stays on account and it's applied to each one. It, it exists to support any event that they would have.
And then it's returned at the end of the year and then they give it?
At the end of the year, yeah.
What is the, um, facility use security deposit at for?
Over two hundred is five hundred dollars, I believe. I don't know what under two hundred is.
I think, is it two fifty?
Or two fifty, I think.
It's two hundred.
And the application fee is two fifty. So, under two hundred application.
We're, we're in the ballpark. Um, I mean, it isn't an economic impact on the organizations. Um, it's just money that's being held that they can't access. And what I'll say is, the organizations that we're talking about exempting are, you know, have always been right there to, you know, make sure that any problems that occurred were corrected, um, and, and done in a, a, a very reasonable time. And, you know, there are other organizations who aren't taxpayer-funded that, um, basically don't damage the village property and leave a mess. Who provide important community services and yet they're gonna be required to, you know, put, put up the money. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of feeling that, you know, you treat everybody the same.
Yeah. I mean, based on this conversa- the conversation that we had prior, you know, I'd be okay with that, too.
What, so specifically, what does that mean?
That we would, I think Barry's proposing that we deny.
I'm, I'm suggesting that I'm probably not gonna vote in favor of this because, um, it's. it's, it's something that, you know, it's not an economic impact on these organizations. We can figure out ways to make it, uh, work relative to not having to come in with a check for every event and then having that returned. So, it, it, it just doesn't seem to me to be, uh, you know, something to, to really-
Yeah, I suppose these organizations could come and request one-off, an exception.
Well, and waiving the security deposit, I don't think is the same as a gift, right? Because they're still eligible for the, it's not being deposited, and they're still, I mean, I'm not Steve Gabba, so, but just based on my interpretation of what he said last time. It, it's not being deposited, and they'd still be liable for damage if they created damage, even without a security deposit.
That's right.
So, we could waive on a case-by-case basis as necessary here, more easily than the fees, because the fees would amount to a gift. But Steve may have a different-
Uh, so what was the fees, um, early, uh, prior to the new, uh, schedule?
In my recollection, it's the security deposit was a couple hun- 100?
100.
100.
For under 200?
Hmm?
For under 200.
Well, we didn't have a differentiation before-
Oh, that's true. That's right.
The new law was enacted. So, it was only 100, security deposit, yeah.
And considering, um, that all of these, e- everybody has, um, insurance in the game, to be in any place in the village, to have an activity, an event. Maybe, uh, we do, we go back to that and just have a blanket, $100, and, um, and call it a day. And, and instead of pointing out one or the other, I mean, that seems more doable for everybody. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna be presumptuous to say that they can, they can afford $500. I don't know. I don't know what their coffers are, and, um, but at the same time, I wanna be, you know, I, I think an even playing field is appropriate.
My only comment on that is $100 doesn't fix much, if we have to do it.
But their insurance would do it. That would be-
It's gonna cost us more to get to their insurance with attorney fees than-
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know if it, if, I mean, it seems pretty, we've had issues like this, and the insurance provider turns around and fixes it, you know, or it gets done without calling Steve Gabba or somebody. I mean, maybe 100 is too low, but I think 500 is, is quite high. And if, if it's to go across the board to, you know, these entities plus, you know, our, our groups, our clubs, our smaller organizations, our churches, um, I think 500 is a lot.
Yeah, so I, I see this a bit differently, right? I, I'm looking at who's exempt, those providing municipal services that have a, a district overlay with the village. As we kind of discussed last time. And for, for each of these, just getting, uh, I, I don't think $500 is necessarily a problem, but it's, it creates another barrier. And it makes it more challenging to work with the village, then you gotta get someone else involved in that organization to write a check, and then, if it's not cashed, it's, from an accounting perspective, it's a liability. It's kind of standing out there, and they have to account for it somehow. It just, it just creates more work and headache for everyone, especially when the, these very few, I guess, this small handful of events that do happen, we know from experience that they've done the right thing. They've cleaned up, they've, they've made amends, right? Because if not, I think someone said it last time, then maybe they don't do it the next year, right? If they, if they trash the place. So, I, I don't see it as much as how much money should be put down as a security deposit, that assuming you get it back. It's just, it just creates more, more barriers. Which I don't think these municipal organizations really need to deal with, and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm grateful that they want to have these events in the village and bring people to the village. That's my perspective. So, I, I, I would vote in favor of how it's written.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still in favor of the municipal services not having, but I'm, I don't feel super strongly. You know?
And according to Steve, those are the only ones we were able to exempt.
That's right.
So, if somebody comes in with an application that isn't one of these, there's no opportunity for us to exempt them regardless of their history, right?
No, they're, I mean, on the form, doesn't, I mean, they could, they could request a reduction.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is different than the fee personally, because the security deposit is not, it's not a gift, because it's not being deposited. And they would still be liable for the damages, even if they don't give us a deposit. But I don't know if Steve would agree with that.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I agree with the municipal, um, allowance. But I think, on the other end, $500 for some, some of these organizations is high. Not these, but other organizations. And I would rather that be reduced to 250. So, in the schedule of fees, what I'm proposing, that it would be for gatherings of more than 200 people, um, there would be a, a security deposit of 250, and then the, these civic organizations are exempt.
So, that would be two motions, then?
Right.
We can only deal with one at a time.
I don't know how many more weeks we can discuss these things.
I know, I know.
Are we ready to vote on this motion? Do we need more discussion on number seven? I'm ready.
Okay. I think do a roll call again, just makes it clear.
Trustee Chaney?
No.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
No.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Mary Jo Hyatt?
Yes.
This is our first, like, disagreement.
Write that down.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, as this, this body, you know?
I'm gonna get a call from Bill Lindberg tonight. So, what do you, just as a point of discussion, what do you think about a reduction of the $500 to 250? Is that within the realm of reason, or is that, again, it's, they're, they're covered by insurance. I mean, it, it, so it's an amount of money that-
It was deductible, right? Probably not $250 bucks.
Right.
Well, a- again, if, if, if we have to be the ones to initiate obtaining money from their insurance, it's gonna cost us money. I, I think what, I don't, I don't think we've ever experienced having to do that. The organizations themselves, like, the, the situation with the carnival the one year, where there was significant damage to, with tire rutting, because they were towing equipment and RVs out of there with tow trucks. That was handled by the insurance company for the carnival operator. So, you know, we, we never, we didn't have to lift a finger, because the fire department did what was expected of it. They made sure that, uh, the entity that caused the damages corrected the damages, and that, that entity had to go to their insurance company to do that.
I was, I'm listening to Tom talking about barriers. And money can be a barrier. And so, that's why I present that.
Is it something that we should, like, check in on?
I, yeah.
With organizations before, like, doing a motion?
Yep.
Um, because the organizations that would have more than 200 people, like, that's probably not usually gonna be like your average resident.
No, but something like the health fair, like the UAME church, you know, I, I'm, I know for a fact that they don't have big coffers.
Yeah.
Um, and they're gonna attract, and they're performing a service. It's a health fair for the community. Uh, things that the historical society does, you know, that attract many people. Again, you know, it's, they're not, you know, wealthy. They're, they're, they're trying to keep all their buildings intact, you know?
And yet, they pay the fee.
And yet, they pay-
It's a security deposit.
Right. And that's why I, I offer a reduction idea. I mean, they'll get it back, of course. Okay, so we'll-
If that's gonna get pursued, I would think that, uh, it has, it should be discussed with the attorney and-
Absolutely.
Use his assistance to help draft the proper motion.
Right, I agree. Okay.
So, should I move on to the next motion?
Yes.
All right.
Right.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park to hold their annual carnival per their letter dated April 18th, 2022, set up to begin on Sunday, June 19th, 2022, and breakdown will be completed by Sunday, June 26th, 2022. The carnival will be open to the public from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Wednesday, June 2020, June 22, oh my goodness, 22, 2022, through Friday, June 24th, 2022, and from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Saturday, June 25th, 2022. Fireworks are scheduled for Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022. Request includes use of alcohol in the park, completed park permit, and proper insurance, including host liquor liability, has been received.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park for a fireman's field day event from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, August 21st, 2022. Request includes use of alcohol in the park, completed park permit and proper insurance, including proof of coverage for firematic events and contests, and host liquor liability has been received.
Second. Any thoughts? Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to grant permission to Boy Scout Troop 45 to use the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for an awards ceremony and end-of-the-year event on Monday, June 13th, 22, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Request includes use of restrooms, electricity, and pavilion lights. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have two addendums? Yep.
Motion to grant permission to OC Bombers to use Brownfield in Veterans Memorial Park for a game on Sunday, June 19th, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and for practices from Monday, June 20th, 2022, through Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, 2022. All events must be in coordination with the other activities taking place in the park, such as Warwick Little League, Warwick Youth Football, Highlander Rugby, Warwick Adult Kickball League, and Warwick Lascals. Completed park permit, proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Barrett, do you wanna do the last?
Motion to hire Ryan Richards to the position of seasonal Department of Public Works laborer at a salary of $18 per hour at 40 hours per week for no more than 12 weeks, with a start date of May 23rd, 2022, per the recommendation of DPW supervisor Mike Moser.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it. Final comments from the board? Does anybody have any comments they wanna make?
I, I do. Very brief, though.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. Um, so we did have an excellent listening session at Memorial Park Sunday before last, and I won't go through all the feedback, just in the interest of time, but I would like to report out on the feedback that we have. So, um, is the best way to do that, to kind of like draft something up, and then it can go on the website?
That would be great, or send it out to the trustees, so that they get a sense of what's, you know, happening.
Yep.
So, yeah, both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve Gabba or somebody. I mean, maybe 100 is too low, but I think 500 is, is quite high. And if, if it's to go across the board to, you know, these entities plus, you know, our, our groups, our clubs, our smaller organizations, our churches, um, I think 500 is a lot.
Yeah, so I, I see this a bit differently, right? I, I'm looking at who's exempt, those providing municipal services that have a, a district overlay with the village. As we kind of discussed last time. And for, for each of these, just getting, uh, I, I don't think $500 is necessarily a problem, but it's, it creates another barrier. And it makes it more challenging to work with the village, then you gotta get someone else involved in that organization to write a check. And then, if it's not cashed, it's, from an accounting perspective, it's a liability. It's kind of standing out there, and they have to account for it somehow. It just, it just creates more work and headache for everyone, especially when the, these very few, I guess, this small handful of events that do happen, we know from experience that they've done the right thing. They've cleaned up, they've, they've made amends, right? Because if not, I think someone said it last time, then maybe they don't do it the next year, right? If they, if they trash the place. So, I, I don't see it as much as how much money should be put down as a security deposit, that assuming you get it back. It's just, it just creates more, more barriers. Which I don't think these municipal organizations really need to deal with, and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm grateful that they want to have these events in the village and bring people to the village. That's my perspective. So, I, I, I would vote in favor of how it's written.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still in favor of the municipal services not having, but I'm, I don't feel super strongly. You know?
And according to Steve, those are the only ones we were able to exempt.
That's right.
So, if somebody comes in with an application that isn't one of these, there's no opportunity for us to exempt them regardless of their history, right?
No, they're, I mean, on the form, doesn't, I mean, they could, they could request a reduction.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is different than the fee personally, because the security deposit is not, it's not a gift, because it's not being deposited. And they would still be liable for the damages, even if they don't give us a deposit. But I don't know if Steve would agree with that.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I agree with the municipal, um, allowance. But I think, on the other end, $500 for some, some of these organizations is high. Not these, but other organizations. And I would rather that be reduced to 250. So, in the schedule of fees, what I'm proposing, that it would be for gatherings of more than 200 people, there would be a, a security deposit of 250, and then the, these civic organizations are exempt.
So, that would be two motions, then?
Right.
We can only deal with one at a time.
I don't know how many more weeks we can discuss these things.
I know, I know.
Do we wanna, are we ready to vote on this motion? Do we need more discussion on number seven? I'm ready.
Okay. I think do a roll call again, just makes it clear.
No.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
No.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Mary Jo Hyatt?
Yes.
This is our first, like, disagreement.
Write that down.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, as this, this body, you know?
I'm gonna get a call from Bill Lindberg tonight. So, what do you, just as a point of discussion- So what do you, just as a point of discussion, what do you think about a reduction of the five hundred dollars to two fifty? Is that within the realm of reason, or is that? Again, it's, they're, they're covered by insurance. I mean, it, it, so it's an amount of money that...
It was a deductible, right? Probably not two hundred and fifty bucks.
Right.
Well, a, again, if, if, if we have to be the ones to initiate obtaining money from their insurance, it's going to cost us money. I, I think what, I don't, I don't think we've ever experienced having to do that. The organizations themselves, like, the, the situation with the carnival the one year where there was significant damage to, with tire rutting because they were towing equipment and RVs out of there with tow trucks. That was handled by the insurance company for the carnival operator. So, you know, we, we never, we didn't have to lift a finger, because the fire department did what was expected of it. They made sure that the entity that caused the damages corrected the damages, and that, that entity had to go to their insurance company to do that.
I was, I'm listening to Tom talking about barriers, and money can be a barrier. And so, that's why I present that.
Is it something that we should, like, check in on?
I, yeah.
With organizations before doing a motion?
Yep.
Because the organizations that would have more than two hundred people, like, that's probably not usually going to be like your average resident.
No, but something like the health fair, like the UAME church, you know? I, I'm, I know for a fact that they don't have big coffers.
Yeah.
And they're going to attract, and they're performing a service. It's a health fair for the community. Things that the historical society does, you know, that attract many people. Again, you know, it's, they're not, you know, wealthy. They're, they're trying to keep all their buildings intact, you know?
And yet they pay the fee.
And yet they pay...
Pay this security deposit.
Right, and that's why I, I offer a reduction idea. I mean, they'll get it back, of course. Okay, so we'll...
If that's going to get pursued, I would think that it has, it should be discussed with the attorney and...
Absolutely.
Use his assistance to help draft the proper motion.
Right, I agree.
So should I move on to the next motion?
Yes.
All right. Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park to hold their annual carnival per their letter dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, set up to begin on Sunday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and breakdown will be completed by Sunday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The carnival will be open to the public from six P M. to ten P M. Wednesday, June twenty, June twenty, oh my goodness, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, through Friday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and from six P M. to eleven P M. On Saturday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Fireworks are scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, with a rain date of Sunday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Request includes use of alcohol in the park. Completed park permit and proper insurance, including host liquor liability, has been received.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park for a fireman's field day event from nine A M. to nine P M. On Saturday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, with a rain date of Sunday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Request includes use of alcohol in the park. Completed park permit and proper insurance, including proof of coverage for firematic events and contests, and host liquor liability has been received.
Second.
Any thoughts? Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Boy Scout Troop forty-five to use the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for an awards ceremony, an end-of-the-year event on Monday, June thirteenth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, from four P M. to nine P M. Request includes use of restrooms, electricity, and pavilion lights. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have two addendums?
Motion to grant permission to O C. bombers to use ground field in Veterans Memorial Park for a game on Sunday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, from four P M. to eleven P M., and for practices from Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, through Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. All events must be in coordination with the other activities taking place in the park, such as Warwick Little League, Warwick Youth Football, Highlander Rugby, Warwick Adult Kickball League, and Warwick Lascals. Completed park permit, proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And Barrett, do you want to do the last?
Motion to hire Ryan Richards to the position of seasonal Department of Public Works laborer at a salary of eighteen dollars per hour at forty hours per week for no more than twelve weeks, with a start date of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, per the recommendation of D P W. supervisor Mike Moser.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it. Final comments from the board? Does anybody have any comments they want to make?
I, I do, very brief, though.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. So we did have an excellent listening session at Memorial Park Sunday before last, and I won't go through all the feedback just in the interest of time, but I would like to report out on the feedback that we have. So, is the best way to do that to kind of like draft something up and then it can go on the website?
That would be great, or send it out to the trustees so that they get a sense of what's, you know, happening.
Yep.
So, yeah, both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.